Polk County Board of Supervisors Tuesday, September 15th to order. I'm going to make one comment before we get going on this is that, and this is more for public comment when we get to that, is that we're going to make sure that the language and the way we're talking on public comment is proper. So if I talk to IT, if anyone gets out of line on public comment, you're going to get muted, and we don't want to do that, and we don't want to change our rules of how we've been doing it. So I'm asking the public to take your three minutes and be professional. Clerk, you see your evidence with proper notice.
The county Board of Supervisors September 15th meeting notice and agenda was posted in the Government Center Building in two places, posted on the county website, and was distributed to the supervisors and media contacts via email or mail on Friday, September 4th, 2020, at 2:11 PM, and was published in a legal newspaper the week of September 7th, 2020. The notice of amended agenda was posted in the Government Center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting with any additional proposed resolutions were distributed to the supervisors and media via email on Friday, September 11th, 2020.
Supervisors have proper notice?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Roll call.
Brad Olson.
Here.
Brad Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Warndale.
Here.
Chris Nelson.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
Here.
Dan Ruck.
Here.
Michael Pritchard.
Here by WebEx.
Sharon Kelly.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
DeLuque.
Here.
Brad Dunkinson.
Here.
Russ Arkham.
Here.
Go Dumming.
Here.
All 15 here.
Don, you want to start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Following the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence in remembrance of the victims of one of the biggest tragedies in our country, 9/11/91. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, nation and republic for which it stands, under God, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Five, disclosure of conflicts. Again, raise your hand or let us know that when we get to that agenda item if anyone has conflicts. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Supervisor Rowdy.
I'd like to make a motion that we just amended the agenda. This came out of our Environmental Services Committee. Our committee chair asked that the way that it was put on the agenda would be number 16 first and then number 15. I'd like to see that changed.
Reverse?
Reverse, yes.
Second.
So what's your motion is to approve the agenda with the change?
With the change, yes.
I would second that.
Okay, so if everyone understands, then you guys would rather talk about the extending of the moratorium 16A prior to 15A. Is that the way I understand it, Supervisor Rowdy?
Prior to, yes.
Here, you want to flip those.
16A prior to 15A.
Okay. Is there any discussion about that? So this is a recommendation by the Chair of Environmental Services, he said?
He asked Corporate Counsel and the Administrator if that's the way it could be put on the agenda. You can ask him.
Was there any discussion? Okay, so we'll have a vote. All in favor of amending the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, carried. One other note on the agenda.
Now the amendment as the.
What's that? Okay, so now do you want to vote on, we voted on the amendment?
Now the amended agenda.
Now, so they have, one other comment on the agenda is number 9A. They left a packet on everyone's desk, but that will not be happening here tonight, the presentation of A, right? So do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I still move as amended.
John first, Rowdy second, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. All right. Matters of offered for adoption on consent agenda. Can we do these all as one? A, B, C, and D. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Supervisor O'Connell, seconded by Supervisor Luke. Any comments? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, carried. So here's where we're at, public comments. Again, if we have public comments and they get derailed here a little bit, we're going to mute, and this will be a test tonight to see if we can keep it a little more professional. Do we have public comments?
We have six from the West Conference Room, Mr. Chair.
Seven, please.
Seven from the West.
Okay, so you have three minutes. Please come up and identify yourself and go ahead and say.
Scott Good.
Good evening, my name is Sue.
Changing that to two, and it's going to be Sean Wenzel.
Hold on, Sean. We're going to do the West Conference Room first. Please, everyone that's online, please mute your mics until we call on you. Okay, go ahead and start off, please, with your public comments. State your name again and where you're from.
Thank you. My name is Sue Gunther. I live in Alden Township. I'm an Amory High School graduate. My husband is a farmer and I work from home building online learning. We're raising two kids here in Polk County. Our daughter just started kindergarten at Amory Public School this year. I'm here to speak as a Polk County citizen and a member of Amory United. Amory United is working to identify and address racism and violence in our community and educate ourselves and others around these issues. Another one of our members, Reverend Martinson, spoke at your August 18th, 2020 meeting. Reverend Martinson spoke of the deep concerns many Polk County citizens have about the unending violent and vulgar behavior brought to bear in our community by the man you appointed to represent us on a very important commission. That man is Commissioner Tom Magnifici. He represents us on the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Tonight, I believe you had on your agenda a presentation by the ED of that commission, but maybe you struck that down or amended that. As you learn about this work, maybe at a later date of that commission, imagine a man like Tom Magnifici representing the good people of our county. Reverend Martinson read just one of his many revolting social media posts last month. There are countless more. He also uses vulgar and threatening behavior at public meetings. Unfortunately, concerns raised by Reverend Martinson have been nearly ignored. So, and like so many racist fear mongers, Mr. Magnifici appears to be empowered by this board's lack of action. For example, I could read the violent and vulgar vitriol he posted August 21st, just a few days after your last meeting. I could read it, but I won't. You can find it online. It's public on Facebook. As far as we know, there has been only one response from this board to concerns raised by Magnifici's threatening and denigrating behavior. The one response we've heard was a statement made in committee last week by Chairman Chris Nelson, that he may stop taking public comment because people like Reverend Martinson use foul language. Chairman Nelson blamed a minister for reading Magnifici's words when Nelson recommended him to represent Polk County. I am so glad to have an opportunity to speak with you tonight. Amory United wants to work with you to eliminate the kind of violent racist behavior Magnifici rains down on us nearly every day. We recommend that you hold your commissioner to a higher ethical standard. People make mistakes and can grow from them if given the opportunity. But standing quietly by is effectively advocating for Magnifici to continue to cause harm. Chairman Nelson, please speak publicly to the process of accountability that your board will take. Amory United is offering our resources to begin this issue. If you do not have the authority to stop his continued show of poor character, as you said yourself, we ask that you end Magnifici's term and find someone who truly represents the wise and caring people of Polk County.
Thank you.
No, sorry. Can I?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, please come up, state your name and where you're from.
My name is Marcia Markord, and I live in the town of Sterling. I'm a member of the large-scale livestock facilities moratorium committee, but my comments tonight are those of my own and not the committee. About a year ago, I was alerted that there were developers who were maybe going to start a large hog factory, a CAPO, just 10 miles from where I live in Burnett County. But I was encouraged then that the Polk County Committee started discussions and even passed a six-month moratorium to study and to research the potential impacts that a swine CAPO would have in Polk County. The Environmental Services Committee was tasked to use these findings to establish an ordinance that would protect public health, the environment, and our property values. But over the last 12 months, I have become increasingly less encouraged and even disappointed because proposed ordinances, amended ordinances, and then new ordinances, even worse than the previous ones, all based on citing were recommended. These ordinances would not protect all of Polk County. And more disappointing was when the results from public hearings, stakeholder meetings, comments of written testimony, and people showing up like I am tonight were overwhelmingly opposed to the conditional use permit ordinance. But the amendment and the amendments, and then the CUP marched on and marched on, and it finally found its way to the full board, not through the committee that originally was given the tasks to prepare it. I just came from the rally outside tonight, and many county residents are there, your constituents. We care about what's happening with the regulations of the swine CAPOs and the important decisions that you will be making tonight. We are sincere in our endeavor to protect public health, our environment, and our property values. I don't think we've ever approved or even liked the CUP ordinance, and I certainly wouldn't go for it because I live in a township where there's no zoning. Information and examples of well-written, researched operational ordinances based on citing, based, not not based on citing, ordinances that would protect the whole county were presented for consideration several times as far back as January. And then they were suggested by supervisors from the committees of environmental and health and human services committees to be explored, but the discussions seemed to slow down, and they weren't even encouraged to continue, and they certainly didn't find their way to the board for consideration. We've learned a whole lot about CAPOs over this year. We've learned about regulations and governing authorities, and we've learned what can terribly go wrong. Being informed and being proactive has prompted me, like other residents, to revisit and identify all the reasons that we really, really, really like living here. We like it here in Polk County, and we wanted to remain like we like or work with what we can really live with, and I think we're not there yet. So please vote no to Resolution 3720, the proposed ordinance. It's wrong for Polk County. My optimism will be renewed if you do the right thing. Vote yes on Resolution 3620 and extend the swine CAPO moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir.
Okay, sir. Good evening. My name is Bill Moss, and I'm a supervisor in the town of Eureka. And you know, not long after the county board started working on this CAPO thing, the town of Eureka got on board, and we were worried about a CAPO coming in our area. And we all sat down and we decided what we'd do, and we listened to our constituents. Our constituents said no CAPOs. So guess what? No matter what my own feelings about this subject was, guess what? We're going to work to get no CAPOs. So right off the bat, we started a resolution, got a resolution going, passed a moratorium. After the moratorium got going, we started working on an ordinance, and we started looking at all the scientific data concerning CAPOs. Guess what? We found no positive scientific data, but we found an awful lot of negative scientific ordinance of data. So I can't understand how the Polk County Board cannot see what's already there and use it and start doing what the residents of Polk County want done. The majority of Polk County residents do not want CAPOs. It ain't that hard, guys. Let's get it done and work together and get it done. Also, by the end of this month, we will also have a CAPO operation permit application already and getting ready to send to an attorney, so that we will also have that in Eureka. I would hand that out to somebody to give to you guys yet, but it isn't completed, but by the end of this month, it should be ready to go to an attorney. And later on, if anybody wants to see it, I'd be happy to meet with them, so on and so forth, or happy to meet with them on any of this. But thank you for letting me speak tonight, and I hope you get the job done.
Thank you, Bill.
I wasn't planning, my name is Patrick McElhone Senior. I live in Eureka Township. I really wasn't going to say anything tonight, but the more I thought about it, the angrier I got. I have a question, Chris, for Chris Nelson and Brad Olson. Why have you made these oppressive resolutions? Is it because of a fear of a lawsuit from a CAPO conglomerate? And that it's too expensive to fight them? If you allow a CAPO, it'll get real expensive fast when the water's polluted or there's a large spill. Are you just going to lay down without a fight? Grow up here. Stop the foreign company from coming to Polk County.
Shut them off. Shut them off. You're going to be muted, sir. All right. I will, I guess, I'm going to end public comment if this is what's going to happen when we're going to use language like that.
We've got one last speaker, Mr. Chair.
All right. Please be a little more professional.
I won't use language.
CAPO home will be put on a list, and you will not be allowed to talk at public comment again.
Okay, I'm Mary Curran, town of Eureka, and I'm going to go over a couple things that are related to the CAPO, but I just feel like we need to kind of revisit and look at the whole picture. I'm looking at a book here called Monopolized. It's a new book, 2020, just came out, David Dayton, it's Life and Age of Corporate Power. So I just want to give you a little bit on my three minutes here. Donald Trump has funneled $28 billion in two separate bailouts for farmers after his trade war with China led to high tariffs on US pork and other agriculture imports. In 2018, during the first bailout, Smithfield, and remember, Smithfield is a Chinese-owned company, qualified for purchase contracts of its surplus for food banks and school lunch programs. This would have compensated a Chinese company for Trump's intended punishment of China. After initially taking $240 million, Smithfield bowed to public press and rejected the contract with the second-largest court company in the United States. Brazil's JBS is also foreign-owned, and it receives $78 million in bailout funds even while it was under Justice Department investigation for bribery. In overall, over half of the farm bailout money went to the richest 10% of farmers, according to a study from the Environmental Working Group. The top 1% of farmers averaged $183,000 in payments, the bottom 8% averaged $5,000. The Trump administration found protecting family farmers challenging in a factory system dominated by multinational giants. Oh, boy. That's an impressive thing to think that they found it too hard to do. Okay, then I'm going to quickly refer to the health situation. Multiple studies have correlated living near CAPOs to public health problems like improper blood function, shortness of breath, and trouble with balance. A Duke University study found higher mortality rates from anemia, kidney disease, tuberculosis, and septicemia. Perspective home buyers aren't blind to these concerns, and real estate crises have dropped as a result, shackling residents to unhealthy homes. And then they go on to talk about Hurricane Florence. Remember, we may not get hurricanes here. We may not get some of these, you know, terrible fires, but we do get tornadoes. You ask the people in Siren, they remember there was tornadoes. You ask the people east of Luck, they remember those straight-line winds and some of that damage. And they go on very clearly to tell them here about things. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
That concludes public comment from the West, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we had WebEx public comments? Uh, east. What's that? Okay. Do we have public comments? Other public comments?
Comments?
All right, identify yourself if you want to have public comment.
Yeah, my name is Ken. I live in St. Croix Falls.
Go ahead and restate your name, please.
Ken Nichol.
Five minutes. You want to watch it?
All right, hold on a minute. We're having problems with background noise. Well, identify Ken as a public comment. Everyone else, please mute your mics until you want to talk. Or we're going to have to mute everyone again.
Okay, so again, Ken Nichol, St. Croix Falls.
Go ahead, Ken.
Two comments. One is my understanding that one of the resolutions that you're addressing today didn't have the scientific study that was required. Again, I just, it's hard for me to believe that this continues to go on like this. My daughter dropped eight, six to eight inches worth of research on the table over at Unity School almost a year ago, and the fact that you're trying to pass things without doing the scientific study stuns me. But the other thing, and I'm an attorney, maybe I missed it, but I'd like to know what criteria that the chairman has to shut people off. Because maybe I missed it, I didn't hear that gentleman say anything offensive. I think he said something like, "Grow up." I certainly would not find that to be offensive speech. But you've got to be really, really careful. I get it, people swearing and doing things like that's inappropriate, but we need full and robust comment, and the chairman just cutting off people just because he chooses to is not a good way to do business. That's all I have.
Thank you. And he actually, the previous caller, just so you understand, did say something more than what you thought he said. Anyone else on public comment?
Yes, Kim Dupre is here, if you can hear me.
Yep, go ahead, Ken, you're on.
Thank you. I'm Kim Dupre from Marina, St. Croix, Minnesota, and I'm a former resident of Emerald in St. Croix County. So I'm here tonight to speak about your CAPO moratorium ordinance on behalf of the thousands of citizens who work and play alongside you in the St. Croix River Valley, because what you decide will affect those living downstream from you. But I also bring firsthand experience living a mile and a half from Emerald Sky Dairy for over 15 years. And much of that experience I put in an email, which your county clerk, I believe, forwarded to you over the weekend. So I'm speaking tonight to give you context to those comments that you received. Just so you know, I was brought up on a 160-acre farm in Iowa. My dad raised corn, beans, and hogs. I spent my summers walking beans, baling hay, tasseling corn, along with a lot of other chores I'm sure you can imagine. My parents were dairy farmers, poultry farmers, and my family fell victim to the 1980s farm crisis. And I lived through that farm auction as a young adult, and memories of that day still bring tears to my eyes. So I can relate to the numerous farm families who are struggling right now. I've watched the rural flight of young people to the cities, the closing of the local schools and churches and lands that changes in our rural areas, and it's heartbreaking to me because I think more people should be raised on a farm, not less, because it gives you character, responsibility, work ethic. It anchors you for a lifetime. I'm sure many folks in your area have had similar upbringings. There's a lot of good salt-of-the-earth type of people who work hard and are self-sufficient. And because of your self-sufficiency, I'm sure you don't expect or even want much help from Madison or Washington. You have an opportunity now to extend your CAPO moratorium and protect your way of life with a strong ordinance. Protect yourself from the bad actors like we've experienced at Emerald. Because with any profession, there's good and honest business people, and then there's some not-so-good and honest business people. And our laws help protect those who are good and honest from those who are not. And industrial ag producers are no different. There are good ones, and there's not-so-good ones, as we've learned in Emerald.
Right, yeah.
I'm here to testify, we didn't get help from Madison and Washington when we were having issues in Emerald. We tried, but we were on our own. And I get that farming has changed, but what has not changed, or will ever change, is our human need for clean air and clean water. So please be self-sufficient. Take these needed actions yourselves. Protect your way of life, your air, your water, because there are thousands downstream also alongside you that will be affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Please identify yourself.
Chairman Nelson?
Yes, go ahead, you're up.
My name is Sarah Byall, and I'm from Lake Town Township.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Hello, thank you. A lot of you know me, I'm a dairy farmer over here in Lake Town. I've been to a lot of meetings. I read about what's going on all the time. And I'd just like to point out that, to me, of these three of the last speakers that have spoken public comment have said the word CAPO. I thought that this was supposed to be about swine CAPOs, and they continuously say they are against a CAPO. Now, I've been told that Polk County doesn't want to harm the local farmers or dairy producers or the other CAPOs that we have in the county, but I haven't heard anyone so far say the word swine in front of CAPOs. So that tells me that this is not a swine issue. This is an attack against all CAPOs, all large dairies in the county. I have a nine-year-old son. I am not a CAPO right now. What am I supposed to do if you guys pass an ordinance that is supposed to be against a swine CAPO? When is this going to end? Is my son, if he chooses someday to come home to the farm and we expand so that he can provide food for his family? Am I going to be able to do that for my son? Is that going to happen?
All right, you got it.
This is his exceptional job of these studies. The staff has spent a lot of time and a lot of taxpayers' money studying this. I urge you guys to end this moratorium, be done with this, and let us dairy farmers continue to do what we do, and that is feed this world and this country. So, thank you, Chairman Nelson, for your time, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. As, we got one more public comment, probably, what time do we start public comment? 6:07? Okay, so we have about seven more minutes, so two or three more public comments. Anyone else want to identify themselves?
My name is John Persico, I'm online. Is that all right?
Yep, go ahead, John. Where are you from?
Yeah, I'm from Frederick, Wisconsin, and I first came out here in 1965. I was stationed at the Osceola radar station, and I part-time worked, I did a lot of work on farms throughout the area, back when they had a lot of farms. I can remember Osceola on a Friday night when you'd come in and all the tractors would be parked up, lined up diagonally. be parked up, lined up diagonally across the street. I've never had anything against farms, I still don't. My grandfather was a farmer in Alabama for a number of years. I used to go down there and spend a summer with him. But it, it seems to me that, and, and, but my background, by the way, I, I've been a management consultant and an educator both for about 40 years now. And as a management consultant, I have a deep respect for the, the needs of the economy. But a couple of things I've learned, and I, and I want to share them really quick. One is that you need to always balance, and it's a dynamic balance, it's not necessarily 50/50, but you need to balance the needs of the economy with the needs of the environment and the needs of the society. And the problem that I'm seeing, and I've, I've looked at a lot of the data, it started a year ago when I, when this CAFO issue, hog CAFO, if you want to use that, because there are other CAFOs which have been here and don't seem to have been as problematic. But when this hog CAFO issue started, and it was the scale of it, I started doing some research down in Iowa, down in Texas, down throughout the area. I go down now, we've become snowbirds, so we go down to Arizona. So every year we go down and we go through a lot of farming areas, and I've stopped and talked to a lot of the farmers along the way. But it's the scale of the hog CAFO that is the potential danger. And the evidence that I've seen suggests that it is dangerous, and that it isn't anything like the old swine family farms. And I understand that the economies of farmers have changed, and that they have to do a certain economy of scale. But the, if, if it gets too big, the, it, it gets dangerous, and there's a potential. And, and as we've seen throughout the world with a lot of economic disasters, when something happens, whether it was Bo-Pow or any number of other economic disasters, it's the scale that can be dangerous. And so I, I'm definitely for the extending the moratorium, or even writing the regulations that would limit the, the CAFO to a considerable limit. So that would be less of a danger and have less impact on the environment. So thank you for allowing me to speak, I appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll take one more public comment. There's someone else there that wants to identify themselves for public comment? One more call for any other additional public comment? Okay, public comment is concluded. Presentation, we have Economic Development Corporation Director Terry Howar here to do a brief presentation.
How brief would you like that?
Well, that's our new goalpost, is try to keep all presentations brief.
Well, I was told no more than five minutes, and I'm gonna hold that easy. So, thanks for having me here tonight. Chairman Nelson did ask that I come and kind of present where we're at from an economic development standpoint for the Economic Development Corporation for Polk County. And, yeah, you'll see the slides coming up there, I guess. So I started this position upon Vince's transition out, so I started about the first of the year. So as with everybody, it's been a transition year. We've had to do a lot of things differently than we thought. What I thought was coming in to do economic development became economic survival. And some of the things that were part of the last three, four months weren't even thought of during the time that pre-COVID was going on. So a lot of the programs and things, we've had to pivot and support. So I report to a Board of 15, for those that don't know, made up of local business owners, utilities, bank, financial institutions, those types of things. So the EDC overview, I'm gonna get up here a little bit so I can actually see this, that will help a lot. So, specific pandemic response resources, so when this happened, we needed to pivot quickly to help the economy within Polk County. So we set up a dedicated web source that people could go to. We also use the social media, such as Facebook and LinkedIn, to be able to get the word out of different programs that were available. So the SBA loans and the grants had our dedicated website. We had an Economic Recovery Task Force that was based here in the Government Center, which included a bunch of government directors in their positions, and also local chambers of commerce. And then we did produce the reopen toolkit. Another thing that we have been focusing on, and of course, the pandemic has just amplified, and I know that the supervisors are aware of that, is the need for broadband. So we continue to work on that. We did complete, just prior to the pandemic starting, so it was about March timeframe, the housing study and the workforce study was completed. So we haven't been able to take that to the next level yet, and that is something we'll be working on as well. And obviously, the other things, assisted with loans, that's one of the things that Lynn from West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning and the Regional Business Fund was going to talk about. And we also do legislative advocacy by going to Madison in February and just working with the local governments. And then we also help guide entrepreneurs that want to start new businesses. And surprisingly, there are, there are numerous ones of those right now as well. So I just wanted to kind of paint a picture of where we're at, because it's been such a fluctuation for the county, and of course, directly impacting the economy. So right now, we're at 6.7, which is actually really good, because right after the pandemic started, we were at 17% or almost 18%. So how we're trending with the rest of the country, so that's Wisconsin versus the rest of the country. So you can see, we've held a pretty steady pattern in comparison to the country itself. Overall, in comparison to the other counties, and I can get more data if anyone's interested in that, but overall, in comparison to the other counties, we're definitely doing well. There have been no businesses that have had to close down that I'm aware of. And the manufacturers that I speak with regularly in the local industry are all counting on 2021 to be a good year. And the indices that they all different track for their different industry that they're in are showing positive things as well. So another source that we used during the pandemic was the WEDC, so Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. That's kind of the overall organization we have, we're part of Momentum West, which is a 10-county region that has these counties listed here. And they offered a grant of $2,500, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation did. And you can see, just in Polk County alone, businesses in Polk County were able to get over half a million dollars just from that $2,500 loan, based on the specifications that you see over here on the right. So there were numerous programs like this. The next one, of course, was something you might be familiar with through the SBA. There was the Payment Protection Plan. This is actually Polk County numbers and how we fare in comparison to the other counties around us. And I won't go through all the numbers, that's not necessary. But I think one of the important numbers to point out is the jobs retained in the bottom right-hand corner. Based on the PPP loans or the Paycheck Protection Program that the SBA offered and that we were able to facilitate through our local lenders, we were able to retain over 6,000 jobs, based on the numbers that were given in the PPP program. Regional Business Fund, that is a source that we count on to do numerous things like microloans, facade loans, growth loans for local businesses that want to expand. Right now, they have actually, as of today, went up 28 applicants for half a million dollars if they have enough fund. And again, this is geared towards small businesses, but it's aimed at helping businesses come out of the economic downturn that we've seen, and be able to go to them and have a financial source that will help them if their local lenders will not. So this is something that we're also working with quite a bit, and that was part of Lynn's organization that, that was going to present earlier tonight. And then moving forward, as we move into 2021, obviously, there's a lot of unknowns as we move forward, everybody's dealing with that. Here's what we'd like to see, and what we're starting to see in some categories, like housing. Many of you have probably had your own instances where you've heard that there is more interest in this area, because people are looking maybe to get out of the more developed cities. I've definitely experienced that as the Economic Development Director. My phone rings more often now for people looking for business space or land that they'd like to maybe move their business out to. I'm actually currently working on a couple RFIs down on the bullet point below there, where businesses are looking to our area to come out of the Twin Cities. So I think as time goes on, we're going to see more of that. I can't statistically point to anything yet that shows that, or even housing-wise, but I think, as we know from the housing study that we completed, one drives the other. We need the adequate housing in order to drive the economic growth and have the local workforce. So we'll be working on that, we'll be working on broadband expansion. We are also going to be part of the new Parks and Trails Advisory Group to make sure that that has a good start, and we look at how that can economically impact our county as well. And then, of course, our legislative advocacy, which we continually do with the other entities that are part of our region and other counties around us as well. Any questions for me? And did I keep it in five minutes?
No, you didn't, but you did a good job. No one fell asleep. Yeah, we'll take a couple comments, we'll keep it brief. Normally, presentations, we don't take them, but I would say this.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
So I was psyched to see that you are going to be on the tag. So I'm on that also, so the Trail trajectory, so that's, that's a great piece of that. On that, have you, or maybe, maybe I don't know this, have you fed into any information on the CAFO discussions? Because the economic impact on that would be interesting to understand. Did I miss that because I'm newish, or could you do that, or?
The economic impact of the CAFO decision? That has not specifically been, been taken up by the, by the committee, the Economic Development Corporation. We haven't, we haven't specifically looked into that. That's something we've, we've kind of left to the, to the process that's in place to take care of and do the diligence on that.
Mike, you got a question? Mike?
I would like, I would like to ask a question about broadband. We've had discussions, and I think it's fair to say that the board put a high priority on bringing broadband throughout the county, and particularly those areas that are not being well-served at this time. Should we sit back and let the Economic Development Corporation do what it's doing on the broadband policy, or is there, do you need cooperation or help, or what are you looking for from the county, if anything?
We'll, we'll take all the help we can get to help expand broadband, and I know the utilities that provide it will as well. There are certain things underway, the Rural Prosperity Act that's been initiated. The governor has a blue ribbon panel now on rural prosperity, and that has a big piece of broadband attached to it as well. So if anything, you know, the COVID epidemic has really thrown even a larger spotlight on the need for broadband access into rural areas like ours.
So, so what specifically are you doing?
Tell you what, Mike, I'm not gonna, we can do that in general government, to get into like the details, because that, that, put it on the agenda, Mike, if you would like Terry to come to general government and get into a lot of details. Tonight was just a presentation. Thank you. Is there any other questions? All right, thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
How many board chair report? Boy, I got a lot. First off, again, I always offer this to everybody, if anyone wants the job, I'm always open to change. So, so, couple things. At Executive Committee, we talked about the public combination. Again, I kind of set the stage to say we're going to be professional. And clearly, clearly tonight, I thought we had a little bit of unprofessional again. Executive Committee discussed this. Guess I want to send it out to the board. And in Executive, we talked about, if this is going to continue, where people feel like they can just let it rip and say what they want, we're not required to allow there to be public comment. And we discussed that, if this is going to continue, that there'd be written comment at our following public meetings. They can write their public comments, and then staff will read them in. So we'll take written public comment, we'll have the clerk read the public comments into record. So I'm just kind of giving everyone a heads up, that may be coming. And hopefully, everyone gets the message, let's keep it professional. Also, at Executive Committee Okay, I will respond to one of the public comments. I did contact Tom Magnifici after the last board meeting. I did discuss with him the inappropriate language that was brought up. And I, again, I don't look at Facebook. That was never part of his portfolio that we checked the box when we made a recommendation in Executive Committee to have him. The appointment was made by the administrator with recommendations by the Executive Committee. So it wasn't by the chair specifically. And Tom has apologized. And not to make fun of it all, but I know Tom's wife actually took his Facebook privileges away and his cell phone for one week. So I believe that will stop, and I hope he understands that he is representing Polk County now. So I did want to respond to that one public comment. Fairgrounds, we're getting a lot of calls. Again, this is to get out in front of this narrative that seems to happen, that people can just publicly make comments, put in the newspaper, false accusations, and I heard a lot of them again tonight on the CAFO issue. One of the things we want to get in front of is the fairgrounds. We've talked a lot about that, the fairgrounds. I want to make sure the public understands, we have public comment on that, that Polk County, our county board does not have anything to do with the operation of the fairgrounds in St. Croix Falls. We are the property owner, and we are working with the Fair Society to do their developments and to support them on their need to grow their, their place there, to have more events, to be successful, to be around here for decades. And I guess, the beef is really with people in the fairgrounds is with the city of St. Croix Falls. And, and the city of St. Croix Falls, you know, is the ones that need to support the fair and the fair to grow. And, and I think it, I think the message needs to be sent to the city of St. Croix Falls that, if the city of St. Croix Falls doesn't want the fair, I'm sure there's plenty of other communities in Polk County that would raise their hand up and say, come to our town. So I hope that's loud and clear, that I hope they work with the Fair Society and allow the Fair Society do what they need to do. But it is not up to the county board. We're the bank for the fairgrounds, we're not the operators. But I also handed out, well, I got one other thing here. I want to make sure, I'll leave this, I will leave this packet in the county chair's office, which is the room right behind this. And this month, I will have to participate in the county's, county's association, and it's this book here, it's the 2020 Resolutions. And we have to all vote on it, it's 72 counties. And it's very informative. We have one of our resolutions in there that Supervisor Bonner Price talked before, that we passed on that did not get a recommendation. Anyways, here's all the things we're going to be voting on. There's also the Wisconsin Counties Platform, which is printed out, anyone could read what the Wisconsin County Platform is. There's a lot of good information about the dues we pay, the audit of the, of the, how fiscally sound it is. The, the meeting is September 8th, for the annual business meeting. Oh, no, excuse me, the meeting's September 21st at 9 o'clock, it's a Zoom meeting that I got to be on. And we'll be voting on all these platform, or voting on all these resolutions. So I wanted to give everyone that heads up, and I will leave that in there. There's also a WCA Annual Conference, the workshops, and I know Fran had talked about attending some of those. And that also starts this month. There's a workshop on cyber threats. There's a workshop on promoting diversity, there's a workshop about justice system. On October 19th, there's a large livestock sighting workshop, where do we go from here, which is pretty important right now in our discussion. There's one on serving our aging population, and one on media. So also, I'll leave that in the office for anyone that wants to look at that. And then the other last item I wanted to say, as I did hand out, this came out of our General Government Committee our General Government Committee, we had it on our agenda, and I asked for it to be on there because I want to be public about this. I don't want to work in the back room, and I've always been that. Everyone needs to know what we're doing. One of the things that I hear as the chairman, you get additional reports that you don't always get here. And one of the things we talked about in General Government was when supervisors pass resolutions, you know, when we pass a resolution, there's a financial impact where it says, hey, we're going to spend outside dollars on a resolution, like with the PEG, we actually ask for funds to help staff. And I think it's going to be very important that we talk as a committee and as a board that this is an example of, and we, and I just used the last one, and what we've been working on is the CAFO, and this is a very conservative number, and I've had a lot of people ask, and we heard it tonight, how much time do we spend on this? And roughly to date, we have spent approximately, we've got 39 meetings that have been on the agenda for the CAFO the last year. We have 19 staff involved. We have approximately 1,000 staff hours. And if you take their benefit, we've, you know, and this is conservative, this isn't a lot of other stuff and a lot of other phone calls, this is just staff time at staff meetings, we spent about $51,000 to $52,000. So, you know, and it's probably good money spent in a lot of people's eyes, which I have no problem with that. But I think we need to, as a board, realize when we pass resolutions, we need to start talking to our administration to say, just to check the box on the resolution, to say this does not cost the county any money because we're not sending a check to someone. It doesn't mean that our current staff can handle the workload. And I just think that as a board, we're going to start kind of asking that harder question is, what is this resolution? How does it impact staff, staff time, before we always just say, here's another one. We have one right now on Lime Quarry. We have one out there on the recycling center. We have one on CAFOs. We have one issuer working on the fair. We got a lot of balls out there that staff is juggling along with their regular jobs. And I know we are, I know staff is not walking around the halls looking for work to do. So I believe we're, we are to the point where we're kind of tapping staff as much as possible. I think that was it for the chair's report. Any questions to the chair on any of the things I commented on? Don't mind taking a question or two. If not, we'll just move right on.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
If we are interested in any of the WCA workshops that they have available, what's the process for?
To get in on them, I would, John, you have a comment about that?
Well, I'm the county representative on the Wisconsin County Association on five different hearing committees.
Yeah.
And we are usually, now we would be having that live at the point, but right now, we're having them all viral.
Yeah.
And I've either been in the county boardroom here or in the office.
But if we'd want to sign up for a workshop?
I think we'd go to the clerk. Does the clerk help us on this, or who?
You know, if I could, I believe, haven't many of you received this?
Just get an email.
The WCA does, they might not have your name. I'll tell you what, I will send them out tomorrow to everybody once again, and it'll say, it'll just be something, maybe it'll say, WCA Work Conferences.
So you haven't been getting emails?
Register for any of them.
No, I have to click on register.
Everyone's been getting them, but maybe the new supervisor's emails aren't, well, she's newer than you. You're only a month into this or two, and Dan is. Russ?
Russ, can you can you talk a little bit? We talked about, we didn't have a true orientation.
Oh, yes.
Can you kind of rush on that?
Yeah, so one of the things that we've been hearing, again, through staff, reporting back to administration and everything, we talked in, that was in the Executive Committee, I believe, is that one of the things we haven't done in many years, and I never really got one either, is we used to do an orientation where supervisors, again, we had our quick little workshop from WCA here a few months ago, but the idea is that we would set up a orientation day and that I think it would help supervisors understand what our roles are and how do we get things on agendas? How do we get things voted on? How do we get things done? And what's the proper process and what our roles are as supervisors now with an administration form of government? Because when you listen to the supervisors that were here prior to an administrator, there was a lot of micromanaging, a lot of departments, a lot of staff issues. And now that we have an administrator form of government here, there is definitely a process, and it really hasn't, I think, it hasn't been followed very well lately on a few issues. And we just kind of got to get back on track so supervisors really understand, hey, I want this issue on agenda, I want to create a resolution. Then also with that orientation, I think it was to kind of let, take everyone through the county and understand where the departments are, where our facilities are, who the directors are. You know, I've been doing this now for five, six years almost, and I still haven't had my orientation and walked through, like, the health department. I haven't been walked through the sheriff's department. You know, there's parks, there's highway buildings, so we talked about setting that up. Is there more, Russ, that I missed?
No, just, we keep keep on it.
And what did we decide during that was how someone was going to reach out? Administrator, do you feel?
Right. I have reached out to UW Extension and to WCA. WCA, as you know, came for one presentation. They do offer a series of workshops, like six, that are condensed in an hour or two each, and you can do them in one day. We did, I think, one of them here. But they don't do those or offer those until the summer. So it may be something we can either get that moved up, but I think more importantly, I I think I can work with some of our local talent here. And as you mentioned, kind of get an introduction to all the departments, what they do, and so on might be good. And then also, in terms of the administrative form, maybe I can get the WCA or UW Extension to to craft something a little bit newer. They do have a booklet, a guide, and I'm trying to print it off for everybody, but it won't allow me to print, so I'll probably have to order it from the WCA. So if you like to read, this is, it's like 117 pages, not a real big book, but it does talk about the different aspects of an administrative form of government.
So I think the idea is, is that we're going to set a meeting date, and it may be an all-day meeting. And I'm sure some of you supervisors that have been here for 20 years are going to be really excited about spending a whole day learning again. Jay may be one of them, but.
You can use it.
You can use it? All right. So sometime soon, sometime soon, we're going to have that, and we're going to end up. You got a question, Supervisor Middleton?
Just a comment. You know, I think part of that orientation, when you got a new person that comes on, should be a face-to-face with you and probably the administrator to update on where we're at with the issues.
Sure.
What's our positions? You know, some of us came into this and, you know, we didn't know where we were at with some of that stuff. I think that would be real helpful for a new person coming in.
So we'll, we'll actually, I mean, we might as well start doing it right now, even if you've been here a couple of months. I thought you knew everything because you worked here before, that's why I never talked to you.
Never know everything.
Okay. Well, you're a highway commissioner, you'd think you did.
It's the issues. It's confusing when you come into the meeting, you don't know, you don't know where we're at or what.
Right, I get it. I totally get it.
A simple update, here's, here's the issues that are coming. Here's where we're at with it.
Yeah. Sounds good. We'll definitely do that, too. Supervisor Middleton?
I just, on the topic of public comment, are you, I, I just, I'm a little concerned that we're heading towards a place that we'd be shutting off public comment. I mean, obviously, we can't control what people say. The first person that I was in here, the August one, was quotes, so, I mean, I just, I.
We had a big talk about that. We looked at our rules of order. At the time, Malia had said the rules of order say we may have public comment. So in our committee, we said, you know, really, public comment, you know, all the committee levels, bring all your public comment, get up and talk. It doesn't seem as much grandstanding at a committee level where it's a little more, you don't see what's happened over the last couple of months. And.
Well, I think part of that is that from the public perspective, if it gets to the board, they're already been following it through committee, you know, for the most part.
Yeah, but here's what, here's what, yeah, here's what, like, last month, for example. So let's just go, I'm just going to follow up with you, I'm going to answer your question. Last month, we had a pastor show up and use the words, the words, the F-word multiple times, quoting somebody else, feeling like she was hitting under the umbrella of, oh, someone else said it, so I can say it. And she could have easily said, he said the F-word here, he said the F-word here, he said, no, but she had to emphasize the word, the F-word. So clearly, when you're like that, we weren't able to mute it. Normally, they're standing right here, you could say, you're done to talk and public comment, we can say, you need to leave. That was totally unprofessional.
Well, I just think, I just want to make sure, I don't want to cut off public comment, and I think you've done a good job of communicating.
Yeah, I'm not going to, yeah, I'm not going to cut off public comment, but tonight, we had, again, grow a pair. So when someone says grow a pair, clearly, men know what that means, right? So maybe women aren't offended by that comment, but I thought that was very inappropriate tonight, after I lead the ground rules. So our rules of order say we don't have to give public comment. There's other county boards at the board level, they don't allow public comment. You do your public comment during committee. So again, people better hear it, because I'm guess, Russ, go ahead.
Well, we're, we're in a new era here, too. I mean, for years, I mean, you either came to this meeting or you never knew what happened except through the press. Now, it's live. I mean, we're, we're live. And we've only been doing this, what, six months, eight months, maybe?
Yeah, good point.
So, I mean, we're, it's new to us, it's new to the public, but to Chris's point, I mean, there are probably a lot of children that don't come to this meeting for public comment that are sitting out there.
We've heard them in the background.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, very few children attended. Once in a while, for a big public comment, they would come, but very seldom, it was adults. And it was in this room, and now it's not in this room. It's everywhere.
On to Russ, what Russ said is, you know, we discussed that Executive Committee that submit your letter to public comment, because there's, I I feel like there's a lot of times, like I said, it helps when Malia would read back a resolution. What are we really voting on? It's one thing to read it, but it's very helpful to hear someone read it to you. It is important to hear the words. So I don't want to cut off public comment, but it's going, so I don't want any assumption that chairman is trying to cut off public comment. Executive Committee said, we got a problem. Executive Committee said, maybe it's time for written public comment. If you want your public comment discussed at a county board meeting, put it in writing, submit it to the clerk, we'll take them as we get them, just like we normally would. The clerk will start reading them off. If she gets that three minutes, that letter's over. So if you write a five-page letter, at three minutes, we're going to cut the clerk off, we're going to go to the next letter, and your public comments will be written in. Now, if we get the public comment that starts using the F-word, we're not going to read that one. That was.
You're not proposing that for now, you're saying if the public.
It's going to happen next month. I I think it is now. I am proposing it because of what happened today after there was warning, and they did it again. But we will talk again on Executive Committee. I think we're done discussing, I know your concerns.
I just, I just get concerned about public health, or public comment and public health.
Yeah, they can, they can call you up anytime. Okay, Supervisor Middleton, they can call you anytime they want. Your phone number is on the record, so is mine. They can come to all your committee meetings. At county board, we're going to hold a professional meeting, and and this is over. We are not going to take this anymore. So it is the chair's position, there will be no public comment, it'll be read by the clerk. You, we just had someone tonight, again, do it, so that is where we're going. Administrator report. You have.
Nine A.
That's my name.
Ten A. Administrator.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, Supervisor Duncan.
Agenda item, the supervisor's report.
Yes, that's what we're on.
Oh, okay, because you said administrator.
I made a mistake.
Oh, okay.
So we got supervisor report from outside meetings attended. Supervisor Duncan said.
Yes, I attended the meeting of Arnhem Memorial and Humane Society. They are trying to do their regular fundraising, which is challenging in the time of COVID. They can't really do their dog walk. They're doing a virtual dog walk for a fundraiser. Also, they're in need of some concrete work in repairs for the dog kennels, which is kind of a high-priced, high-ticket item. So they certainly need help fundraising.
Supervisor Demling.
We had ADRC meeting, and we have the budget done for Burnett County, but we're still preparing Polk County, which is quite a bit different.
Can you tell us a little bit about what ADRC is for supervisors that don't know?
It's Aging and Disability, and they do Meals on Wheels. We do the bike, it's a three-wheeled bike that has a small motor on it and stuff, and it, that's been going over very well. In fact, we did a double one this year. We had the funds for it, and we have the people for it, so we voted to go ahead, and they gave, it's 25 for Barron and 25 for Polk. And this year now, it's 50/50 because there was such of an outreach of the people, and they get to keep them.
Thanks, Joe. Supervisor Middleton.
And I attended the CDDG housing, and they talked about their budget. The executive director was unable to attend, so we kind of had a very short meeting, but talked about moving people off of the waitlist, and Polk County's kind of in the middle of all the counties for number of users and number of waiters, people that are waiting. But I will be giving you guys flyers, because they're going to give us flyers to hand out and get around. She really wanted us to push out information because they have resources to get people some housing help, and they haven't used it up yet, so I'll get that out when she gets in.
Thank you. Supervisor Luke.
I was on virtual West Cap program yesterday, and it was, they had a little trouble with their phones and like everybody's having, apparently. And they, but they're, they're heavy into these programs, you know, weatherizing and a number of different things. I'll be getting more information that might be helpful to better understand it. Took me the first few minutes before I realized that I'm sitting in a scenario of acronyms again. And I spent the first two years on the Highway Committee and didn't understand a damn thing went on, you know, with acronyms. So there, as a result of my comments to them, they're coming up with a list of acronyms that are used in their, in their programs, and I thought that's not a bad idea for, for any, any one of our committees that, that our member comes in new and just to understand the, the language in acronyms is, you know, you hear a couple of them, and pretty soon you're trying to catch up to what they're saying, and they're on another one. So to get up to speed, it wouldn't be bad. And the biggest trouble that they, they had with, with Highway Committee years ago was they have, I don't know how many acronyms in the Highway Department. I learn some new every day yet, after all these years. And I suppose they have 75 or 100, maybe, maybe more. Which was a great idea to inform us about the acronyms and what they meant.
It was the first thing I did.
If they only would have put them in. If they only would have put them in Health Medical Order, it would have been extremely helpful. But that's, that's one of the things that I think that we should, we should consider. But I'll have, I'll have more information. They'll be sending stuff on, on our, uh, you know, our part in, in West Cap. And it's, uh, it's, they, uh, it's an extensive program, and it is a good one.
Any other Supervisor Bonapres?
I spent a two and a half hours today with the mayor of St. Croix Falls, Kirk Anderson. I read the minutes of the, several of the St. Croix Falls Fair Board, and the letters that people in the area surrounding the fair written to the fair board, and that, the comments that four other people on the fair board had made. And, uh, they were, I'm sure that the decipoles of like concerts and tractor pulls have done the announcing in Osceola for 55, however many years that is. And, uh, one motorcycle I know going by my house would rattle the windows. And I said it late in two weeks ago on a Saturday afternoon and Saturday night. And these new manufacturers, and most of the big, most of your big machines are your newer variety. And I'll tell you, the, the decipoles, uh, it's not going to bother you at all. But the fair grounds was there before the houses. I'll tell you that Mr. Anderson is in full support of the fair, the fair staying there. And, uh, you know, just going back to before Steve got on the board, over the years, the, the fair is, uh, society is making a 30-year commitment to raise funds and what they're, for their, their payment, so the fair doesn't, it's never been on the tax roll on the tax levy. They want to keep it that way. And they have a proposal so that when we build a grandstand, we can use the grandstand, and it can pay for itself. And Mr. Anderson is going to have a real hard time, and he's trying to convince these people. So my point is, everybody that can contact or have questions from people about the fair, they're only trying to make the events at the grandstand at the fair pay for itself. I was on the search committee for the Highway Shop, and boy, uh, like Centuria, there they got probably one of the biggest buildings in the county sitting there empty. Osceola's probably got 50 acres or more with sewer and water and blacktop and curb and gutter and everything, and cornfields all around. And, you know, what is, what is the buildings really worth that we, we own? There's, there's more money needs to be spent remodeling those buildings. The 4-H building and, and the livestock building are probably the only ones that really are worth even $50,000. And the people at St. Croix got to realize that the fair is going to move if they, if we don't have their cooperation. So it was a very fruitful meeting, and I just thought that probably with my experience, prior to Steve being on the board, represented a little bit of what's the past history has been, how the fair society is just trying to pay for itself, what the county owns, and what the fair society owns, and what's good for them and what's good for the county. So we're going to, I'm trying to make everybody aware that, uh, that's, that's the setup that we're fighting. And right now, he does not have the votes, and I don't know, we got the votes to keep it there. But we're working toward that goal.
Any other outside committees, any comments this month? All right. Administrator Netherland, you have your.
Yes, I want to give a quick financial update. And first of all, as you heard last month in the audit report, Hope County continued to be on solid footing financially through 2019, as evidenced by the approximately 1.7 million that was added to our unassigned fund balance. That brings our total to over 13 million. I just want to state that that balance increase, I think, is a direct reflection of our, our employees, their leaders, and that includes the supervisors in this room. I, I think it's incredible that this county can continue to be on, on good, solid footing over the years, for several years now. So that's a thank to all of you. Now, 2020, the unprecedented event of COVID-19 kind of racked our lives, right? And with that came new challenges for local governments. And I would say that these challenges specifically increased our expenses for things like protective gear, cleaning equipment, audiovisual technology like you have here, and, uh, and safety measures. And with that, uh, we, to date, we probably spent, well, we spent close to $175,000 on COVID-related items and efforts intended to keep employees and the public safe. Now, despite this unprecedented challenge, I am, the point I want to make is I'm cautiously optimistic that Hope County can come in on solid financial footing again in 2020. The actions that were taken early in the year, such as eliminating unnecessary expenditures and not backfilling open, several open positions, has had the effect that was intended. County employees are working more efficiently and delivering important services, and waste is being eliminated. These things, along with the effective applications of grants from the state and federal government, are all very important for Hope County to remain financially strong. Another bit of good news is about our local economy. While most counties in Wisconsin are seeing a severe drop-off in sales tax, Hope County, after taking a hit in February, has rebounded, and we are now running, year-to-date, over 6% above last year's sales tax. That's incredible. Now, we believe this is partially due to the increased number of remote workers. I think our location next to the Twin Cities is a factor. And there's been a surge in home improvement projects and other big-ticket items. And also, folks are just staying around home as opposed to going on vacation. So all those things has helped us, and I think it, it should make us all feel thankful about the resiliency of our economy. Importantly, though, while I'm encouraged, and I wanted to emphasize that to you, I am encouraged by what we're seeing, I am also expressing some caution that we must be wary of being overconfident or thinking that this pandemic is in our rearview mirror. It's not. We don't know what's going to happen going forward. So with that, we have to remain vigilant to make sure that we're doing what we can to stay on top of this, keep people safe. We won't change any policies that, that might, uh, show that we're taking, you know, a relaxed attitude, because we're coming up on flu season, and we got kids going to school. So let's hang in there and do what we can to keep that at bay. Next thing I want to talk about is, is really still on the theme of the economy, and that is, I'm encouraged by two recent proposals. One from Clayton and one from Osceola to create new TIDS tax incremental financing district. These proposals, really what they do is reflect the confidence of that community that they can entice businesses, homes, uh, and other developments to come to their area. And that's a good sign, and I think they're well, they're certainly needed in key places. I also wanted to point out that two TIDS, one in St. Croix Falls and one in Osceola, have recently closed. They ended their, uh, span of time, and that we expect a payout from both of those to the county. A certain percent of that money will come to the county sometime in the near future, we hope. So that's more good news. Another development, if you recall, earlier in the year, we applied for a Transportation Alternative Program Grant, or the TAF grant. Uh, that has been awarded by the Wisconsin DOT to Hope County. That's a grant of $53,600 to study alternative transportation options. So it's mostly walking and biking. Uh, but it's how do we get people to places they need to go? Whether it be work, school, recreational opportunities, and so on. We can tie that in with other modes of transportation possibly, such as ATVs, UTVs. But this is a grant that I think is going to be well-used, and a nice little compliment to what we're doing with our Parks and Trails Advisory Group. Thanks to the Wisconsin, uh, Western, West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission for this helping with the application, as well as our own Tim Anderson, our planner in the Environmental Services Division. Clean Sweep 2020, the second program, was held about three weeks ago. If you recall, this is the program where people can drop off their hazardous waste, pesticides, paint thinners, those types of things. It's a free event. It's funded by a grant from the state. We had our largest turnout ever of 230 people dropping off not only chemicals, but also large appliances and so on. Thanks to Mo Norby and his recycling staff for another great Clean Sweep program. Now, finally, it was mentioned earlier by Ms. Middleton, but the Parks and Trails Advisory Group was named, and we have 14 members. I'll just read their names off now, and I just want to thank everybody who applied for this. We had some great candidates, and we chose a variety of people who will represent different views in the county, that they have one thing in mind, and that's that the betterment of this county. Can they collaborate? Can they work on big goals and make big differences in this county? And I'm really excited about this group. I won't give you the background of each, but I'll tell you the names. Ryan Lee, Derek Anderson, Mark Trigusad, Doug Johnson, Jim Dow, Bob Wright, Paul Isaacson, Linda Schoberg, Terry Howar, Andrea Jerrick, Julia Rasmussen, Colleen Foxwell, and the two supervisors who will, uh, serve as chair and vice chair or, and when they determine who does what, Chris Nelson and Amy Middleton. So this group will get started in the next few weeks, and I'm very excited to announce those to you.
Thank you. Really got to take a five, huh, Joe?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. You got it, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you too, John. I made John wait last month.
I beat him.
Five minutes. All right, number 12A, I do not believe there's any appointments by the county board chair. appointments by the county administrator?
Yes, I do have one. We have asked Brittany Frye to be our interim health officer. Brittany has been involved with the Regional Consortium on, on, on health officers. I don't have my notes in front of me. But she has been a health officer before in Burnett County, and she was our interim health officer before the last health officer had a public health degree. So she's got a lot of experience, and so we've asked her to step in. We will begin the search project or the search posting along for the new health officer here in the next week. And we do need approval by the board on that.
Oh, for this, you do need a, a motion.
I move her approval of Ms. Frye.
Seconded by Joe. Any other discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All saying aye carried. 13, COVID-19 update from Community Service Division.
Well, I, I pass this out, I guess, on break. There's way more information than I will go into tonight. It's just for your information to take home with you. Some of the key points that we're working on in the Health Department and the Division, a lot of work going into the schools right now, trying to figure out reentry and keeping those schools open and what happens when they have positive cases. A lot of questions coming in. We've actually dedicated one FTE equivalent to answering all of the calls from the eight school districts. So trying to support them the best that we can, and Brittany is vital in that role too, the new health officer. We've increased our contact tracers and disease investigators. The disease isn't really slowing down. The nurses who have been doing it since March are feeling a little COVID fatigue, so we're trying to keep them refreshed and letting them do some other public health activities, getting some nurses in and trained and other contact tracers to make sure that people are quarantining when they need to quarantine and isolating when they are actually positive. I always like for people to go to the Hope County website and look at that dashboard. That's going to be your best source of information, local information. Sometimes the state's information is delayed in getting back to us, so the numbers might be a little skewed, but you can get the best information right here. We update that every day. I think we try to do it by 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So with this, you'll see the number of hospitalizations. It looks like maybe we have seven hospitalized. That's total, so that's a cumulative number. There's one person hospitalized right now. And the number of deaths is cumulative. You know, the deaths happened a few months ago, so luckily, we haven't had any deaths to report. All of these are the cumulative numbers. The information up on the top is how we get that red box. That can, that is how the state calculates our activity rate for positive cases. It's based on the number of tests administered, the rate of positivity, and our trajectory. So over the last two weeks, they look at what the activity is in the county to give us that rating. I looked today. It's only updated once a week, so we have to wait until Wednesdays at 2 o'clock to get the most up-to-date information, so this information is a week old. Looks like we're still going to be in the high activity rate, but our numbers are a little bit lower. We're moderately high, so that might be, may or may not be a good sign that we can, are controlling the disease. Rate of positivity is 2.61. That's the current rate of positivity. You'll, you may have heard on the news that the rate of positivity for the state is about 20%. And I did some research on that, and the, the rate of testing is lower, so that's going to make the positivity rate go higher. So you really have to pay attention to the data that's given to you and maybe drill down on it. Call us, ask us questions if something doesn't seem right. The age range of positivity is the 20 to 25-year-old group of, of people. And, um, I think that's about it. There, we did catch an error, and the state was double counting some negatives, so it made our numbers look like they jumped for the positivity. But from here forward, our numbers will be accurate, so we corrected that with the state.
Any questions? Brian?
I have a question, um, just on contact tracing. So for every positive result, is the Public Health Department involved in trying to contact, trace that back to somewhere?
Contact tracing is for people, once we get a positive result, we create a line list of who that person had contact with. We don't try to find the, the source. There's community spread, so we assume that it's everywhere. So we're, we're contacting those people who have had close contact with that positive case to have them quarantine for 14 days to see if, if they've caught it too.
Supervisor Middleton?
Oh, can I send questions to regarding school cases? Like, I, I just sort of, I don't know, I don't, I might have sent them to you, but. So if you have school cases, but questions about school stuff, so where should I send them?
So call the 8400 number, and the reception staff will get it to those school liaisons.
Awesome report, Tanya.
All right. Jason. You're the guy. You can wait for this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sure you do feel that way. Thank you, Jason.
Before you guys, tonight, you have basically two resolutions. One is.
One is to extend the swine capable moratorium for another six months. Um, just to fill in some of the supervisors that haven't been with us that whole time. The first moratorium was passed October 15th, 2019 for the first six months. The second moratorium was passed in February of this year for another six months. Basically what that means is our moratorium is going to take and expire on October 15th here. Um, so there's no other opportunities to adopt any new ordinances or other ordinances before the moratorium. Um, and that is, is going to expire or, uh, no longer be in effect unless the resolution for the moratorium extension is put into place. Um, the county staff here and, uh, the committees in that, both the Environmental Services and Health and Human Services committees have spent a lot of time in that with the capable matters as Chairman Nelson mentioned with his numbers before, um, including, uh, stakeholder meetings that we conducted for three different types of actual, uh, people in that within Polk County. Uh, we had a good turnout for those meetings in that. We had 97 people attend, um, and then they were able to ask questions and, and try to get some answers. So it was kind of a one-on-one, um, for a public comment session. Um, we also had a survey during those meetings, so we compiled data in that and had those answers available for the committee and, and that shortly after that. Um, throughout the mid-spring and the early spring, uh, and that staff, uh, was doing a lot of reviewing of scientific studies and reports in that that we had been provided by the public. Uh, we also attended other DATCAP meetings and that to get more information from them as professionals in the field. And we basically compiled all that information into the Polk County Large-Scale Swine Facility Study Group Report. Um, it was a report that we provided to the county board, um, in that back in June. Uh, so that is kind of where some of that time was spent in that with staff as well. Um, on, uh, June 16th, in that, the committee had, um, basically narrowed down a proposed ordinance amendment in that to amend the Polk County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance to include a swine capable as a conditional use permit in the egg 20 zoning district. Um, so staff at that time filed a petition to amend the ordinance to kind of start the amendment process, which is before you guys tonight, uh, which involved a public hearing on July 8th. Um, at that July 8th public hearing, uh, we received 144 written public comments. Um, I would say that a large portion of those comments, um, were people that wanted regulation, probably 75%. And I would say about half of them in that wanted stricter rules than what are being proposed tonight. And then the other 25%, and that didn't want any capable rules and that were extra burden and that to go through, uh, besides what they've already got. Um, so as part of that and that, that's all included in your report and that that's in your packet tonight. Just to jump into the actual meat of the amendment, basically the county had three different types of ordinances in that to, um, consider. It's an operations-based ordinance is one option. Uh, that's under the general county powers. Uh, underneath that ordinance and that, more than likely, it would be the county board that would be reviewing and hearing the applicants and you would make your decisions at this level. Um, it's basically a conditionally use permit process on steroids. There's a lot more requirements in there. Um, with the guidance of the committee and Malia, um, our court counsel, we did send that off to DATCAP for review, uh, but we have not received anything back yet, um, from them. I believe in that that they're having their legal counsel look at their comments that they provide to us at that time. So we don't really know if that, uh, ordinance is going to be completely lawful. Um, the existing proposal and that, that's in front of you, uh, DATCAP reviewed. Uh, they took and suggested removing 12 of the 17 conditions because DATCAP's review, um, was only to their administrative code, which is a livestock sighting code. Uh, and basically anything that wasn't in that, they were going to say, no, you can't have. The county, um, and that doesn't have to obtain approval from DATCAP. They are only an advisory and they have, uh, provided, um, an opportunity for the county to work with them if they want to adopt a sighting ordinance, which is this other, uh, type of ordinance that the county could do. Um, the downfall's in that, uh, to a sighting ordinance is you're very limited to that administrative code, what it says. It's just an administrative review, so there's no public hearing, no opportunity, um, for any public to put in any input. And that would be strictly administered by staff internally, so. And then the third, uh, option is the CUP ordinance in that is before you. Uh, that would be vetted through the Environmental Services Committee. It involves a public hearing process. The conditions that are proposed are very basic conditions, um, and that kind of prerequisites, if you will, in order to even have an application come before the Environmental Services Committee. The nice thing about a CUP is that it can be handled on a case-by-case basis or a property-specific basis. So if you have a property that's surrounded by wetland, there may be a condition that would be assigned to, um, protect those wetlands. If you've got a property in that that doesn't have any, um, you know, real environmental features in that around it, and that, that property maybe doesn't need that same wetland condition and that of the one that's surrounded by the well. So being able to look at that, the committee, um, also underneath this proposed amendment, uh, would have the ability to ask for additional information, studies, tests, um, which we did include in this amendment, that those costs would be at the applicant's expense. Um, so the committee would be able to get more information. It would be able to, um, assign additional conditions and also have that public hearing. The bad thing about the CUP ordinance in that, that is proposed tonight, is that it only applies in the towns that have county zoning. Um, and that the areas in that within the towns that don't have county zoning that are shoreline, um, has already been addressed in that by the committee here, um, because they, um, would not be suitable for a swine capable use. Um, so the shoreline areas are done, that accounts for roughly, um, 43 to 45% of the county, um, and that's, we're only talking about the areas outside of the shoreline and that. And for Polk County and that, we have, um, 16 towns that are under county zoning. So there's eight towns, um, that this would not apply, and those are Sterling, Lake Town, Plan Falls, Lorain, Georgetown, St. Craig Falls, Garfield, and Farmington. With that, um, that's basically all I have.
Yeah, so we're going to go ahead and allow there to be a couple of questions. You know, if supervisors want to ask Jason a question or two, we did want to give a little bit of an opportunity, um, especially for some of the newer supervisors that haven't been through the process that some of us have been here for a year on and, uh, this would be the time to ask Jason any questions about anything. Supervisor O'Connell?
Correct. It only applies in the egg 20 district. So the reason being, or it only in the egg 20 district is that the egg 20 district, 20 stands for basically two houses per 40 acres or one house per 20 acres. So those areas are lessly populated. A lot of our farms own larger amounts of land anyway, so it's probably not a burden to them. Um, there's a smaller amount of land already zoned egg 20 in Polk County. So by putting it in that zoning classification, it will take and require the town's input on the front end, um, so the town will be able to weigh in and then it's going to have to come to the county and that for the rezone. And then there would be a CUP process that would follow. And I think it's important, um, and that to also note because of that, currently, right now, Polk County has no regulations on any, uh, people and that, much less a swine capable. Um, so if the moratorium doesn't get extended and there's no adoption of any type of ordinance, um, and that basically there is no regulations and that from the county's point. However, in that, any swine capable or any capable in that matter, um, is highly regulated by the DNR and DATCAP already. They have to get, uh, pollution control permits and, uh, basically that's for any animals that are 1,000 animal, or any farms that have 1,000 animal units or more on their, uh, property. So for a pig farm or a swine capable, that'd be roughly 2,500 pigs.
Supervisor Duncanson?
Yes, can you tell me, uh, if the Stower Trail, the Gandy Dancer Trail, and any of the parks in the Polk County park system are within a mile proximity of any egg zone properties?
Um, that all of those would be within an egg zone property.
The egg 20 specifically?
Pretty tough. Now, right now, the egg 20 zoning classification would be a little bit in Lincoln, um, and that, but not a lot and a little bit in Alden, um, but not a lot, so.
What about Georgetown?
Georgetown.
Georgetown is unzoned town and that, so the areas within the shoreline area and that would be, um, already prohibited from swine capable and that, and then the areas outside of it are unzoned and that, but Johnstown and that has some egg 20, but that's not near the trees. Or any parks.
Or any parks, okay.
Supervisor Warnold?
Uh, this, the CUP is specific to swine, correct? Okay, if you were to go to a, uh, operational ordinance, my understanding that that is not, uh, specific to swine, it's all the KFOs? Can you write a operational ordinance that's KFO only?
Swine KFO only, I believe you can. Yes.
My understanding being there's no KFOs, current, swine KFOs currently in the county, that you could write an operational ordinance that would be specific to. But if we already had one, then you couldn't.
I believe in that, that the county could, um, adopt an operational-based ordinance, you know, for any type of use, um, and that, and including swine KFOs. Basically, let's say that we had a swine KFO already, how it's dealt with is those are pre-existing uses for the grandfathered-in clause. And then after that, and that they wouldn't have to take and comply with the new ordinance or anything until they were to expand or to increase their size. Then upon expansion, they would have to comply and that because they, because they would be expanding their use. So that's how that would work. Um, and at the county, um, it's another thing and that is that the county can have multiple avenues for enforcement and that, so the county could adopt, uh, conditional use permit and they could still adopt an operations-based ordinance as well. Um, and then, you know, there's pros to that too, because you get some, some town involvement, which the operations-based ordinance doesn't really have any, um, town involvement in it. Um, and you could also have some other things underneath just general county powers in the operational-based ordinance that you can't regulate in the zoning ordinance.
Supervisor, you, you want to follow up, Steve?
Yeah, just a little follow-up. So the operational ordinance would cover the, the unzoned towns as well. And I'm particularly interested in that because I have Sterling and Lake Town both.
Basically, the operations ordinance is enacted under general county powers statutes and that, and public health statutes. And that versus a zoning ordinance were limited to 5969 or the general zoning authorities and that, or that. It's two different.
Supervisor Bonner Price?
There has never been a, uh, KFO swine application in Polk County, has there?
Any other questions for Jason? We're, and, uh, our attorneys here, Joe's, you're here tonight, so when we get to these resolutions, um, you know, Joe, I'm sure will be answering some of our, uh, legal questions tonight, so. Lee is not here. Joe is ready to go when the time is right. Uh, thanks, Jason. Are you going to stick around, Jason?
Yep, I can answer any questions to Mr. Chair for us.
Okay. 16A Environmental Services Committee, Resolution 36 dash 20, resolution, extending the moratorium on swine KFOs. We have a motion. Supervisor Rowdy, we have a second. Second, uh, LeBlanc. Um, is there a discussion? Came from Environmental Services. Can we, uh, Joe, would you like to? You have something to start off with on this or no?
I can answer questions if people have questions when they come up during discussion. Uh, if people want me to chime in, I'm more than happy to answer specific questions that come up.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Rowdy, you, uh, made the motion, you're Environmental Services. Can you tell us a little bit about this, uh, extending the moratorium?
Uh, yes. Mostly it's because we're a work in progress and I'll apologize if I was told I said we'd be done in the second moratorium. We didn't get there, but I may make mistakes before. But Jason mentioned that we're working on an operation ordinance right as we speak and it has been sent to DATCAP. And along with that ordinance, there should be an attachment on finding the facts. And they're here, they just didn't get with it. And that's the reason we're asking for an extension is so we can finish our project as we'll explain when we get on to the CUP. We weren't done with those either. But right now, we're talking moratorium and we would like to ask for a six-month extension to move along with the project and finish what we have done.
Supervisor Milton?
Um, and I just wanted to, um, I know we got a lot of public comment on the, um, we got one piece from Venture Dairy on the prohibition of us doing what we're doing tonight and, and then, um, I passed an email on to you guys that came from Adam, uh, anyway, Boschill, from Midwest Environmental Advocates. And you can see that it's in your mailbox, but, um, and then actually another attorney who worked with Burnet County, when that letter came out, it lit up on the, actually it's not illegal what we're trying to do. This whole notion that, um, the sort of Venture Dairy letter is trying to kind of intimidate and stop, uh, local governments from taking time to understand these really complex issues. I mean, these are really complicated, layered, both legal and regulatory, and I don't think we should be sort of intimidated and bullied into not passing our moratorium because of this letter. They did the same thing in Burnet County. It's rolled out there and now we're seeing it in Polk County. We've seen it in the southern part of the state. And so just want people to know that we can pass it, a moratorium, it's not illegal. And you've heard me talk a lot about this whole, um, fees, application, uh, application fees, performance bonds, and there's been a lot of conversation about that it's illegal. Well, this is the same group that tries to tell us it's illegal when indeed it actually isn't. Um, so it's, it's not, you know, it's not illegal for us to do this. And it's really us being, they're trying to intimidate us at a local level and not really take care of the county. And it really clouds the process. It makes a bunch of chaos, it keeps everybody on their back heels. We should just stay the course, stay focused and pass the moratorium, finish the work in Environmental Services, get the environmental, I mean, the, uh, uh, operation ordinance done. We can have both of them if they want to come to us as a package, that's fine, but we have work to do. We need to protect our county, we need to protect all of our county, not just leave out the third of this, the towns that are not covered because there's large implications of that, but we need to protect everyone and, and we should not be intimidated by these letters and just pass moratorium and do our work. You guys, go back to your work.
Supervisor Dunley?
The thing I've been thrashing in my head is, if you can stop it, is, okay, if we take and pass this moratorium and go on and on and on, come to the bottom line, isn't the DNR the one that has to enforce all these things?
That a question, okay. That a question for the attorney, I would say.
Yeah.
Not, uh, the rest of the board members, because they all have their own opinions.
So similar to any other county that passes this type of, so, the moratorium... So similar to any other county that passes this type of, so, the moratorium isn't what is going to go to the DNR for them to enforce or not enforce, et cetera, right? If we pass the other resolutions, those will go to the DNR for their review and they will let us know what, uh, their opinion is on it, similar to what they did to Bayfield. Now, Bayfield's resolution is currently in some state of limbo where they passed the resolution, it went to the DNR, the DNR said you can't do this, this, and this, and then I think the application for the KFO got withdrawn and now there's no real issue sitting there. So the ordinance still stands, but it just hasn't been challenged to get struck down. So ultimately, yes, the DNR is going to take a look at whatever we pass and they're going to tell us whether or not what we do is appropriate. Now, we don't have anyone challenging the moratorium as it currently exists. We don't have anyone challenging the resolution as it currently exists, but that doesn't mean someone isn't going to come down the line eventually and do that. So you're looking at, uh, something that ultimately, just because it hasn't yet been challenged in Bayfield, doesn't mean it's legal. Like I said, the DNR told them there are some issues with their resolution that they have out there, but it hasn't been challenged yet, and I think that a number of people will point that out. That doesn't mean that it's a legal resolution, it just means it hasn't been challenged. I guess that's a little bit more wide than what your question was, but do you think it...
Joe, your question, your question was really, does the DNR already, is...
Do they have more control over this than what we're proposing?
Right, so similar to what Jason said, the DNR and Dadcap both have regulations over...
Joe, can you explain what Dadcap stands for?
The, yes.
We just talked about that with Supervisor Luke.
It's the Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection. That's Dadcap, so it's a state department, it's a state agency, uh, that, um, our county has been interacting with, uh, to address these issues as they come up from, from the board. And as, as those concerns come up in reference to...
On the last county board meeting, if I'm not mistaken, the DNR was there.
At your last general government. I mean, in the Health and Human Services.
Yes.
Tim Jackson. And it was told to us that there was no... Buddy Con, they still need all these permits and nobody has addressed them. And what the word is going around that they're not going to address them and it's going to just disappear. That's what I've been told, but they have to go through all these permitting and stuff and they said it would take at least two years.
So I'd like to respond to you, Joe, on that. I did get a request from a supervisor to actually, that didn't, wasn't able to attend the Health and Human Services meeting, and that's why you guys got that, because I wasn't going to play an hour and a half video today of what people missed. But that's what you're talking about is, and, and everyone had a link, whether they looked at it or not, I did send it out and asked the IT department to edit out the, uh, that thing, so, yeah. Okay, another question from someone that hasn't asked one, Fran.
Question or can I make a comment?
Yeah, you can make a comment.
The way I view this is I think that there's other counties around the state that are watching us and watching what we're going to do. And I think that it's time for us to step up and show some leadership. I think this is an issue that's going to impact the county for years to come. Um, I don't think, uh, we want to short shrift this, I think we want to give it its due diligence and take the time that it needs. So when we do this, we have all of the information and a well-rounded process, uh, moving forward. You know, I want to thank Environmental Services and the other staff members and committee members who have been working so hard on this for so long, and I can understand maybe if there is a little bit of fatigue with that, but, um, you know, this is an opportunity for us to be a leader and be viewed as a leader around the state, and we need to give this the time, the due diligence in order to do that.
Supervisor, uh, Bonner Price?
Uh, the, uh, Wisconsin Counties Association has a proposal and we voted on that. I'm on the steering committee and Bob was with me. We discussed this for two and a half hours in the steering committee, comments from, I believe, most of the counties in the state, Bob, and they looked at what Dadcap has and what the DNR has, and they have legally addressed, I think, everything that you could. And they've got that incorporated in a two-year proposal that they sent to the legislature and that we voted on recommending from the county. And if we look at Polk County's resolution or proposal and we look at, uh, the, uh, the Wisconsin county's proposal to the legislature and the county's, Mark O'Connell called us the next day, Bob, and, uh, he's the executive director of Wisconsin County, and he felt for sure that, you know, there's going to be a new election, but I, I want to see the state take the leadership on this. They're doing that and duplication is costing us a lot of money. We need to get, we need to get more information from, from the DNR, Dadcap, of, Tanya and I had invited Tim Jackson to come to the, uh, Health and Human Services, and he spoke to the whole county board, been here several times trying to inform everybody, and they have total control on every permit there is. And, uh, I, I think that, uh, if we look at the leadership and the things that are in place, we're very well covered in. Duplication is, uh, I think is what we're doing a lot.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, just to Mr. Bonner Price's, uh, point that he was making about the Wisconsin Counties Association, uh, potentially lobbying the legislature for a two-year moratorium, um, they, that was something that was coming out of the Wisconsin County Association committees. Unfortunately, apparently that got struck down, um, and they, uh, their board voted not to, in fact, lobby the legislature to bore that two-year moratorium. Just, just, uh, a very recent update, unfortunate update on, on that particular issue, just, just so.
I think what, what the point is there is that, you know, still go to the legislature, but without the full recommendation.
Sure, so, so essentially...
Just like our, the proposal that, that Polk County has got on the...
Three strikes are out.
These three strikes are out.
Whatever that...
Uh, that didn't get full support of the steering committee, but it...
And that's, that's, these are in this book right here, so if anyone wants to see those resolutions, whether they're supported by the county societies or not, like, uh, Corporation Council has said, um, yeah, there was some lobbying effort for that to happen and it's not going to happen now officially, but, um...
Still go to the legislature.
It still goes to the legislature and they're still going to keep talking about this.
It's just like in our committee's year sometime, we have a resolution here...
Right.
With no recommendation or...
Right.
That's the same thing as what that...
Right, right. All right, um...
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Um, uh, my, my own, one of my concerns is, okay, if we extend for six months, and Doug, you and I talked about this today, what are, what are we looking to add or change? Because do we have a list of, these are the things that we still have left to do and because it can't be five, five months down the road then and we say, well, we need more time? Because haven't we identified, what is it that we're missing? You know, what, what do we feel we're missing on this, these documents? And are we better off just working with the DNR back and forth to get these things done and use them as a resource for us to help get these things done instead of always having to do these things, you know, on our own? I, I just, I'm just concerned that we just had six months, okay, we didn't get it done. What's to say that we're going to get it done in, with another six months? Uh, because we don't, I haven't heard anybody say, this is exactly what we need to do in this six, six months, here's how we're going to use our time. You know, what, what do we, what five things do we need to do before we get this thing? You know, what's done mean? What does done mean? I guess is what a good way to put it.
So your, your, your question is the Supervisor Rowdy?
Well, I'm looking at, we had the conversation earlier today, but I'm not comfortable with what done, we need to get this done. What does that mean?
Supervisor Rowdy, like, like you mentioned earlier, uh, when I was a supervisor, and I'll just respond, you gotta want to get in a debate while I'm sitting here as a chair, but, you know, you, you said that question and, uh, I, I, I kind of asked you the same thing when you, when we proposed originally, because like I said, I, uh, in my world, I live with schedules, right? Someone always says, hey, when is my house going to be done? You tell them when it is, and everyone's working the last week, just cramming it in, no one gets it done on time, and you wait till the last week. So we had originally, and I, I wanted Supervisor Kelly and some of the new supervisors to understand that, the first res, we, we had a moratorium for six months. Then this supervisor sponsored a resolution to extend the moratorium with the caveat that, uh, we would not allow him to be in the shoreline district to try to help the unzoned townships, and I also put in there that it would be a month-to-month extension because I thought it would put pressure on the committee to actually get the job done and not wait till the end and go, because I, I warned everyone, I said, I guarantee you, we're going to get to the six months and we're going to hear, oh, we didn't have enough time. So Supervisor Rowdy, I believe that was what you were referring to earlier, and I think Supervisor Kelly's bringing up the same issue, and you help her with that question like you did with me before.
Oh, yes, I think I can.
Go ahead.
One would be what Jason said, is we created within the last month an operations ordinance, and we weren't able to do that before, and that has been sent to Dadcap without finding a fact, but we have to put these two together and finish the project. Now, do I know how many weeks it'll take? I don't know anymore. All I can say is, we're not done. We, we just need time to work on this. You can't just stop in the middle of a project and say, oh, you didn't get done. What does another six-month moratorium hurt anybody? I don't see how it can.
That question...
Well, I've been told, I've been told that it takes more staff time, it takes this, well, we've been doing that and we, we still haven't finished our project. We just not have a moratorium, not have any protection, and keep working on it?
But what's left to be finished? That's my question, what's left to be finished?
What has to be finished? The operation ordinance was just written and it got, we don't have even the report back from Dadcap. And so we, Jason just said, he doesn't know when it's coming, they might have sent it to their head attorney. And so how can we put that ordinance with the finding a fact and like all the others are done? That needs to be done yet.
Here's my answer. Supervisor, uh, Olson.
So time me, because this could be my five, you know, one of my two-five-minute stretches. We have seen it before, it, it came to Environmental Services, uh, one of the first days we talked about this, um, it was just the Bayfield ordinance with Polk County in it, um, and the committee at that point decided not to look at it, it is realistically the same thing. All we've done is copied and pasted the UREC ordinance. But Mr. Chair, could I poll the county board here for just one question, just raise their hand? Is it okay if I poll the county board? Who hasn't had anything to eat in the last two days? Thank a farmer. Um, because that seems to be where it comes from. We seem to, I'm, I'm not sure when being a farmer supplying food for the world has become looked upon apparently in Polk County by certain members of our, our county, um, as what I look to be is worse than a drug dealer, at least when a drug dealer gets arrested, he gets out on parole. The goal here is, is very simply, I, I've seen it from the start, I see the activists, I know who they are, the goal is to end large-scale operation farming, and not just large-scale operation farming, all farming in general. They want to go on, so the other day, I took it upon myself to see what it takes to feed Polk County. And Tanya, could I show you to pass those, Ellen? It will be pretty, pretty shocking, um, as, as those come. In 2018, USDA said it takes 222.2 pounds of meat per person, for every citizen in the United States of America. That's what we consume. So based on 45,000 residents in Polk County, and the average pork finishes out, finishes out, we eat 52 pounds of pork, it takes 12,316 hogs to feed Polk County. We raised 200, we're only 12,000 short. It takes 57 pounds of beef, it takes two and a half million pounds of beef, 7,300 head, 107, 107 pounds of poultry per person for 4.8 million. It takes 601,000 chickens just to feed Polk County. If you add them all up, subtract roughly 50% of, of land in the shoreline district, it's going to take 1,749 animals per square mile. So that's, that's, that's what we have, I mean, we're, we're only, you know, 600,000 chickens short, 53,000 turkeys over, we're 2,500 beef short, and we're 12,000 hogs short. And we hear a lot about how small farms and organic farms can feed the country. Polk County has 2,100 farms, 97% are family-owned, 1% are organic. I don't think, apparently, the family farms can't feed Polk County, and certainly the organic farms can't feed Polk County. I may be the smallest dairy farmer left in Polk County for all I know, my cows still run up and down the road every day of the week, all summer long. And for this fantasy world of people to think that I can feed the world, get over it, I can't. I don't have to like KFOs, I don't have to like large agriculture, I just need to understand that they're there for a reason. That my, my days are over with. I knew it in 1992 and I took fire over from my parents that my days were numbered, um, you know. I'll pick in the gentleman from the John Deere dealer over here, it doesn't matter, somebody my size is not going into the John Deere dealership or the Case dealership and buying a new piece of equipment. There isn't that kind of money in it. Everybody seems still on agriculture, we need to step back, we don't want to use technology, we don't want to do all these things. But I still want my cell phone. I mean, I, I'm all for stopping large agriculture, and let's move back to 1960, because most people will say I haven't moved from 1960 yet, so it'd be no big deal to me. But do you want to get rid of your cell phones? Do you want to get rid of all your amenities? And that's what we're saying. Agriculture has become very efficient. Is there some bad apples in the game? Absolutely, there is. Do accidents happen? Absolutely, they do. This was stupid a year ago when we started it, it's stupid today. If you watch the tape from Health and Human Services, the state has it under control. How much money do we want to spend? How much time do we want to spend? And it isn't that they want, that they're trying to, but, you know, none of these people are out here protesting that cities are dumping, City of Ashland dumps 15 million gallons of rush sewage into Schwamigan Bay every year virtually. We don't hear anything about that. Bayfield County isn't upset because Ashland's dumping in, but, oh no, heaven forbid, a hog farm could come, a dairy farm could come. Make no mistake, this is just the beginning. If we let, if, if we mandate that hogs stay out, poultry is next, dairy is next, it is, it is the same game played everywhere. And six, one out of six children in this country are food insecure. If we want to stop large agriculture, we're going to get one out of seven, one out of five, one out of four, one out of three, and that isn't including the millions and millions of adults in this country who are food insecure. So I, I'm not sure if the people who want to stop large agriculture just want to starve more children in this country, because I don't see any of them giving up their food to go to hungry children across this country or the world. I get it, we want to protect the environment, we want to protect the soil, but I hear over and over again how, oh, the hog farms here, the hog farms there, they've, they've, they've completely... they've, they've, they've completely ruined the soil. Well, guess what? Iowa still grows bumper crops of corn every year. I don't think the soil has been ruined. I don't think, you know, I get it. There is, there is accidents. Have wells been contaminated? Absolutely. Bad things happen. Bad things happen every day, other than agriculture. And if we're going to say agriculture is the only problem, we better look outside of agriculture and say, you know, for months and months and months, I've heard all about hydrogen sulfide ammonia. Well, if we want to get rid of hydrogen sulfide, you're going to get rid of your Blacktop roads, because they're the biggest producer of hydrogen sulfide. We're going to get rid of all of our gas, all of our oil, all of our processed foods. So we need to protect everybody from hydrogen sulfide. We need to do those things. Are we looking at the use of commercial fertilizers? Now, we really don't care about commercial fertilizers because they don't come in the form of hog winner, cow winner, or poultry winner. They don't smell bad. We don't worry about the lake shore owner who's spreading more fertilizer on his 50-foot square lawn than I spread on an acre of land to grow crop of corn. And we have an opportunity to send a message tonight. A year ago, we passed a resolution that said we supported agriculture of all types and sizes that followed all the rules, regulations, and guidelines set forth. We have an opportunity tonight to stick to that, to see if in this county, we, this board actually supports agriculture, or if it doesn't. And that will say a lot about this county board. It will say a lot about this county, if we actually support farmers or not. And I get it, because I've heard it a million times in the last year. Oh, I support agriculture. But no, I'm against this. No, I'm sick and tired of that. I could puke every time I hear it, because really, you don't support agriculture. You want to end agriculture. If you farm my way, then I support agriculture. No, you know, I don't like Amazon. I don't have to buy from Amazon. But if we're going to control big business, let's control it all. Let's kick Walmart out. Let's kick Menards out. Let's kick everybody out and say, hey, where's, where's my little store? Are we going back to the one-room schoolhouse that used to be in Climb Falls? That's where we want agriculture to go. I'll leave it with that, with one last question for Joe. If we are sued monetarily at some point, or any county, who pays? Insurance or taxpayers?
Taxpayers pay for the insurance.
But we're not covered, according to Malia, we're not, liability does not, coverage does not cover if we get sued monetarily at some point.
Depending on what the lawsuit is, correct? There are certain times where we are not covered by the insurance.
Did I stand there my five minutes? Well, you don't always say a lot, so I'm good with that. Joe, so one of the questions I hear being asked, and I think this is really good that we're able to have, I think we need to have this discussion tonight. And I appreciate it. And as much as Supervisor Middleton brought up about the, you know, the intimidation from the letter, you know, you feel like your side feels like that's an intimidation letter. There's, there's certain supervisors that feel the same thing from the other side. There's people in our public that are writing false accusations. They're writing, I mean, they're saying all kinds of stuff, and they're local people. And so I just want you to know that, that intimidation, that, you know, just exactly what you talked about is happening on, you know, I don't call it the environmentalist side. Because I think once you become an activist and you lie and you make stuff up, as far as, this is the Nelson Olson. Brad and I are so far apart from this. I had nothing to do with this. And the reason it's on our agenda tonight is because, as a county board chair, I got to look at it from a higher level. I'm not going to get down in the weeds like some of you are right now on these issues because we were required to bring a resolution. And I want protection for my community. And, and I wasn't going to allow the moratorium to end or a resolution there to take what the committee did on the conditional use. So that's why they're on the agenda tonight, so we do talk about it, so the public can hear the truth. And we don't have a couple of activists out there writing letters to the editor or posting things on Facebook that are blatantly lies. So that is why we have to talk about this tonight, because we need to get, the public needs to know what we're really doing. And we never have an opportunity as a board to have this discussion. So I appreciate both sides. I think one of the questions that gets brought up, is the moratorium extension legal? That's what I've heard ultimately. It's legal, it's legal, it's legal. Joe, is, is it legal for us to extend the moratorium again for another six months?
So the legality is more or less up in the air, is how I, how I'll answer that question. It's a shade.
Perfect attorney response.
Right. At this point in time.
Boy, you get applause for that.
Did Malia say to say that?
No. It's a shade of gray. So the way that this resolution is written goes against the way the statute for municipality moratoriums is drafted. So the statute, the way that's written, says that you can have a moratorium for a period of time, up to a year, and then you can have a single extension of six months. We've had that. We had a six, our board chose six months instead of a year for the additional moratorium. And they had, and, and we passed an extension for the additional six months. Now, we are in an unprecedented situation, as the resolution addresses, where we had a pandemic happening. The Wisconsin Supreme Court had put a hold on the Wisconsin Constitution, on the United States Constitution, as it applied to criminal prosecutions and people's right to jury trials. That is an unprecedented change in the tolling of timelines. An argument can be made that this is also a change in the tolling of timelines as a result of the pandemic. So, long story short, is it legal? It's up in the air. It's a novel argument that we would be making. So it might be something new that a court would have to address, and the court would have to make a determination of whether the pandemic is an appropriate reason to go against what the statute says. So strictly speaking, the way I read the statute, it says, no, we cannot do it. However, there is this defensibility that we have if we were to be confronted on the issue. Now, as like I stated before, as of right now, we're not being confronted. There are no known attempts to file for a permit. If that did happen, if someone came in during this extension and said, I want a permit, we would then say, no, there's a moratorium. Sorry, you can't have it. And they would then have the opportunity to start a lawsuit. So regardless of whether or not we have that defensibility, it still does invite a lawsuit. Now, realistically, that lawsuit is going, isn't going to get resolved within six months, right? The moratorium that you are considering today is only a six-month moratorium. At the end of that six months, that company could then come back and reapply. So their lawsuit theoretically is moot, which means it has no merit anymore. They can come back and get their conditional use or whatever, as long as they follow the regulations that we put in place. But the main risk that the board has to consider is if a court determines that we are so outside of the parameters of what's legal that they think it's appropriate to incur court costs or attorney's fees or those types of things, that is going to be the real damages to the county, is those costs. So that's what you're looking at. You're looking at doing something that, it's a, it's a defense, a decent argument, but it is, it is just that. It's an argument against my interpretation of the statute that says we can't do it. So that, more or less, is my answer to that.
Sure. Supervisor Luke had his hand up first.
Well, he pretty much answered the question. I heard the, what would be wrong with passing the moratorium at this particular juncture, given Doug and company allow additional time to work on the project that, that they may be, you know, can propose as something that we would be living with? If we're challenged, forget it. You may say, well, fine, but we probably would have enough time at that juncture to, to have our ups and a row in place for the next resolution. It's just a matter of time.
Right. So the question then, is what I'm hearing is that, yeah, that the board is saying, okay, if we get challenged, you got some legal fees that you could incur possibly, you're going to come back and say, our moratorium was not going to be able to be held up. Someone filed an application to do this. Then we go back to the fact that the county has nothing in place. There's no CUP in place, even if it's a simple CUP. Really, then the county, if we find this moratorium is not legal, then the county has nothing in place for any kind of protection, public, like Jason talked about, correct, Jason? I'd like to get that, that if we don't have anything in place, we're going to be hanging on a moratorium for six months. Hopefully, that is strong enough to protect us, that we don't get challenged. And as long as the board understands that, that, you know, we are vulnerable without having anything in place, you know? And that's, again, where I think some people have asked for the CUP to be considered. So there is something in place, just like the shoreline ordinance. You guys work on the shoreline ordinance constantly. It's never right. You guys seem to be working on that yearly. And I guess that's what I just hear from the public, is, is that risk.
And so ultimately, my job isn't to tell you what you can and can't do, right? You're the board. You make policy decisions. That's your job. My job is to tell you whether I think we have a legal basis to make the argument if, if we end up getting sued. So ultimately, to Jay's point, you aren't deciding whether or not what you're doing is legal. My job is to advise you on whether I think what your policy choice is, is defensible. That's ultimately what it comes down to. You're going to be deciding what your policy is. My job and the questions that you ask me is, do I think that we, that I can defend you if we go to court? That's, that's the only thing I'm addressing.
Yeah?
So nobody's applying? So it takes 18 months to two years to get to the DNR and the HEDC? This is six months. We're covered. There should be no challenge in the case of that.
Is that a question the you asked?
Theoretically.
Can't any ordinance be challenged?
Jason, do they have to go through the DNR before they apply to us? Or if we pass the conditional use, they would have to go through DNR?
So one thing I would like to clarify though, too, and that is, so if they file an application, and let's say that the moratorium was ruled unlawful, and that the county has nothing right now, and that, so their application date would come back to the date of when they filed their application, unless the court says otherwise, and that, so there would be nothing in place.
Right. That's what I.
That's part of the risk also, besides the attorney's fees. And that, is that you have that potential to have an unredacted timeline.
Right. Supervisor Middleton.
So how did Burnett County, they just filed an extension. And so they've sort of finessed this, and they cited COVID as one of their main things. So it seems like we're in good company with ours.
So I can't opine on what the Corporation Council of Burnett County advised their board of. I don't know what the Corporation Council advised their board that they can and can't do. For all I know, their Corporation Council told their board, no, you can't do this legally, and they did it anyway, for all I know.
Yeah, I don't think they did, because somebody said that it was all just fine, and there was hardly any discussion.
Regardless, like I said, this board can make a decision. My job is to tell you whether I think we can defend it. So whether another county did or didn't do something is a policy decision of their board. And again, what they did doesn't necessarily, just because they did it, doesn't mean it's legal, is, is my responsibility, I guess.
Don?
I believe Burnett County took out application papers, but they never filled them out. They've never turned any applications.
Who, Burnett County or the, or the proposed KFO?
Burnett County. The people that took out an application, they never, they took out an application only. They've never filled them out and turned them in. And I don't believe they intend to.
Supervisor Dunkinson.
I have a question for Joe. Joe, when you first started talking about the legality of this, you made a comment to the gist of that, remember your exact words, that the resolution we have in front of us tonight was not written in accordance with the statute that addresses the moratorium. And if I understand that correctly, I would like to know why the resolution was not written with that statute in mind?
The original resolution from 2019?
The resolution that we have in front of us tonight is, were you referring to, to the resolution we have in front of us tonight? Or are you referring to something a year ago?
The resolution in 2019 had the opportunity, the original resolution. When looking at the municipal statute, this board had the opportunity to set the original moratorium for a year. This board, as a policy decision, chose to set it at six months, which they had every right to do, okay? The statute then goes on to say that the governing body has the opportunity to extend a single time for a period of six months. We then did that. So we, we extended it towards the end of the first six-month period. We extended for our single time, six extra months. Now, we're at a point where the statute is not, doesn't provide for another extension. The original maximum amount of time that the board, in my reading of the statute, could have had a moratorium was 18 months. This board, or whatever policy decision or reasons that they had at the time, chose six months, which then ultimately, in my analysis, allows us to have a full one year. So we lose that first six months off the front end. One year worth of moratorium. Now, this resolution addresses that issue with the single extension by saying, we are in an unprecedented time where these time limits essentially shouldn't apply. And that, that would be our argument if, if we get challenged. The time limit in the statute shouldn't apply because we didn't have the opportunity to look into this, 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 this. And that's what the resolution that's in front of the board today basically says. And like I said, I'm not saying that it's illegal for the board to make that determination. I'm saying it's going to be an argument, right? If you put yourself in the shoes of someone who wants to put a KFO here, they're going to say, no, look at that statute. It says, you can't do that. My point is, in advising you, the board, in making your policy decision, that you can do this. And I think that I will, in court, have a good argument for why we are legally justified in doing this. I may or may not win, because there is the position that the statute says we can't. But I think that it is a reasonable argument for that extension.
Is there follow-up, Dunkinson?
Yeah. I just have a follow-up question. Your legal opinion is the resolution that we have in front of us tonight, a development moratorium?
So my, my, I was addressing the extending the moratorium.
Okay. But do you term that as being a development here, moratorium?
Well, I don't want to get into, so ultimately, we're looking, your question is getting into some things that I would be more comfortable addressing either in a closed session, because they are issues that, right? Can help someone sue the county. And, and I would rather not address that in an open forum, such as this.
Thank you.
You've already talked twice about Supervisor Middleton.
Surprise, surprise.
Yeah. Supervisor Warnau.
Question. So the general operation for the, is, the ordinance has already been written? Send in? Sent in? Also for review? It was sent in for review?
Yes.
What's the timeframe? I mean, is there any timeframes we're getting to that?
I don't, we don't know if there is one. It's, it's there, send back.
And is it a, an ordinance that was developed? All the language in the ordinance was developed by us? Or is it a duplicate of somebody else?
It was part of the Eureka ordinance.
Jason, could you answer that question for Supervisor Warnold?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So the operations ordinance that the county did, Park Council, Malia, and that took the Eureka ordinance, and basically changed out the statutory authority underneath that ordinance to fit a county, and then put in Pope County instead of the county Eureka. She did remove, there was some attachments in that as part of that ordinance. She removed those because they were CAFO in general, and then they were not swine specific. And then there was, and then attorney in that, known by Madison, that was going to provide her with swine-specific data, and she has received that, but we have not seen that yet, and that, or she hasn't had a chance to review that. So that's kind of where that is. Eureka's ordinance is very much similar to the Bayfield County ordinance that's been brought up here tonight, and it's basically a CUP process, so. At the same time, that, and be that, I'm sure that we're going to get some changes back from that cap because it's not a citing-based ordinance, and that cap is advisory-only, but they're reviewing for citing.
Follow-up, Supervisor Warnold.
So Eureka's has been approved by those entities? So there's a still.
And the ordinance doesn't have to be approved by that cap or the DNR either, and that, however, that cap is advisory in that to the county. The issue that comes to the county is whenever they're looking at assigning a condition in an ordinance, if it's more restrictive than that cap's condition, or that cap's same rule, the county has to provide proof on why they need to be more restrictive, and that with scientific information. And that, and so that's going to be the burden of the county. And so with all of this, you know, some livestock sighting rules, if the county wants to be more restrictive, we just have to be able to back it, and that's the legal risk that the county is going to be taking.
By copying and pasting another county's or another township's ordinance, you know, that's where I think Doug's saying is, you know, you guys saying, there's no way you guys can meet that burden of proof because you haven't done anything. You copied and pasted and said, let's just try this and get input, is what I'm understanding, right? I don't understand.
Correct, even with our.
That's what we did.
Correct, even with our CUP standards and the 12 that that caps said, no, you can't do this, and that would be up to the county and that to prove, and that, well, no, this is why we need this in our ordinance. This is why we are more restrictive than that cap.
We have not done that in the 12 months we've had. The committee has not done that work. Is, is it possible that that'll get done in the next six months? Because if I understand, is the moratorium we're doing for six months, is there another extension?
My advice would essentially be the same as it is on this particular extension, that we're at a limit already for the number of extensions.
Okay. Supervisor Olson, this is your final draw.
So lines 23 through 25 on 3620 is over and above, we would be, we would be adding that to the moratorium. That was not.
What did you talk, what?
Uh, page, oh, it says page.
Page 87.
Very, very last page of the package, Chairman.
On 37, 3620, the moratorium.
3620, okay.
Yeah.
So you're on, you're on the resolution we're on.
Yeah.
In what lines?
23. 23 through 25. That, that would be extending this moratorium to cover that. Would that not need a different moratorium? I mean, we're adding something to a moratorium and saying, oh, by the way, here's our moratorium, but now we're going to put this on top of. So by adding that to the existing moratorium, we're changing the original moratorium and the extension. By adding lines 23 through 25, we're adding to that moratorium, instead of just staying status quo.
On the COVID issue?
No, no.
That's why we're asking for the extension.
Right, no, but I mean, we're, we're adding, we're adding to our moratorium.
I understand, but the original question was, the attorney said, we were able to do an extension because of COVID. Supervisor Rowdy says, we're doing the extension because we need to do more work on the operational ordinance.
They haven't completed our work.
Completed it. And you're saying.
But there was never, originally, there was in the first two mor-, in the moratorium and the extension of the moratorium, there was no option for an operational-based ordinance. That's being added to this moratorium extension.
So I wouldn't be concerned about the addition of that language into the moratorium. I understand what you're saying. The, I, adding additional things for the Environmental Services Committee to look into during the time that this, this requested moratorium gets extended isn't realistically something that I would be concerned about getting, I mean, adding additional things for the staff to look into at the same time as finishing the work, as Mr. Rowdy said, on the original work the staff was supposed to be, is doing during the moratorium. Adding those additional things that the board is asking the staff to look into, I don't think makes this resolution any weaker to defend if someone were to challenge it, is my answer.
Could the county keep moving forward without the resolution? Is the resolution mandatory to keep moving forward?
The county could continue to do the work. However, as Jason pointed out, we would be open to people applying, and even if we pass something later, if that application came in and we didn't have a moratorium, they would be grandfathered in on their, on their use.
But we, we do have a CUP on the agenda tonight to vote on, so. Right, and we have state standards.
And we have state standards that already, because the state standards do protect, Jason, if I'm correct, state standards, like when the, the people came to the meeting at Health and Human Services from DNR, all those state standards and all those regulations they have, they do protect the on-zone townships, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so everyone's treated the same under the DNR rules? Okay. Can I answer your questions?
Yep.
Okay, after we get through everybody who's asked two, and there's not another question, I will entertain Supervisor Middleton's third question, if there is one still. Does anyone else have any other questions about the moratorium right now extension? Supervisor.
Yeah, I'm obviously doing, this is all interesting rhetoric that I'm not always that familiar with. But to put this in English, to me, it appears like the thing to do would be to eliminate the moratorium, pass the conditional use permit, and then we've got protection in place, and we wouldn't be able to be challenged because we had a moratorium in place that wasn't legal. So we're still giving time to work on the issue, but we've got some protection already in place, also sending the right message to agriculture that we're pro-agriculture. And we don't fight that legal fight.
The question is, is, you're saying, okay, I hear your opinion. Could, could the board pass a CUP? And could the board have a, can we pass a moratorium to just, if the CUP passes, could the board pass a moratorium that is strictly about developing an operational base? Would there be any sense to that? An illegal, you know, can the board have another moratorium? You're saying we, we're, we maybe are okay, you can defend us even though it's not legal right now. You can defend us that you think we're kind of legal. But are we allowed to pass another moratorium to do, we, our moratorium was, it says the original one, moratorium and the first moratorium extension, was on the development or expansion of swine CAFOs in Pope County. Could we pass a, a moratorium that is?
Point of order?
I'm asking the attorney a question.
Okay, no, well.
So I don't, I don't hear your point of order. So the question is, is can the county pass a, a moratorium just on the operational-based ordinance?
It would be, in my opinion, difficult to try to pass another moratorium under the condition that the reason we need to is to conduct, because the type of work that would be done is the same type of work. So it would be very, very difficult for our office to defend that type of action.
Okay. So are there any other questions, or anyone that hasn't asked two questions, that would like to ask another one? One kind of knows where we're at. Supervisor Middleton, would you have another question?
Well, it seems like the follow-up on Tim's timing, sort of a timeline thing. We have, by the time we passed, we passed the moratorium, we have six months, and we were to be challenged, if these guys would be done with their work, we'd be long out of the chute by the time they even got a court date potentially, right?
Theoretically, right. And so the, the biggest issue would be if a court found, even though the issue is now moot, that court costs, so there's a cost to filing an action. Attorneys do a lot of work on the front end, I'm sure they would claim. And so they would have a certain amount of money that they spent. Not to mention, they could also try to argue that they have loss of income during the time that they had to wait for us to get through our stuff. So you're right, that ultimately, we would be done with our work. The only concern is the cost that the taxpayers would incur if we lost that litigation and had to pay those costs.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Suppose we're ready to, we've got a motion in a second. We've had no amendments to it. I'm going to call for the vote. Go, go. Want a roll call vote?
Voting on.
So we're voting on 3620, and we're voting on to extend the moratorium, as stated. That's what we're voting on. So an I would be in favor of extending the moratorium. A no would be not supporting the extension of the moratorium. I'm reading that correctly, Corporation Council?
That's correct.
Okay. So, and as the chair, I will vote if there's a tie. So you can skip by me until you get to that point. So we'll do roll call vote.
Just a technical question, you want I or yes?
Say however you want.
Thank you.
Okay. Russ Arkand.
No.
John Bonaparte. Joe Dumeling.
No.
Brad Olson.
No.
Bud Rowdy.
Yes.
Steve Warnold.
Yes.
Chrissy LeBlanc.
Yes.
Dan Rook.
No.
Mike Pritchard.
Yes.
Sharon Kelly.
No.
Tim O'Connell.
No.
Lee Middleton.
Yes.
Lee Luke.
Yes.
Rand Dunkinson.
Don't tell me there's a tie.
If there is a tie, seven and seven.
John Bonaparte, you want to sit in the chair? You're the first vice chair. You've already voted.
I already voted.
Can you vote from there?
No.
Like wise?
So it's a tie vote, huh?
I have seven and eight. He didn't count him.
Seven, seven.
Thirty-seven, seven right now.
So the chair, the, huh?
I can go through the votes again, make sure.
Read us back your votes.
Well, I have Brad Olson, no. Rowdy, yes. Warnold, yes. LeBlanc, yes. Rook, no. Pritchard, yes. Sharon Kelly, no. Tim O'Connell, no. Middleton, yes. Luke, yes. Dunkinson, yes. Arkand, no. Bonaparte, no. Dumeling, no.
Can you total those up as seven, seven?
Seven and, yep, seven and seven.
Okay, and I vote no, not to extend the moratorium. So the motion fails, the resolution fails not to extend the moratorium. So now we're at, we are at Resolution 372015A, Amendment to the Pope County Compromise of Land Use Ordinance Related to Swine CAFOs in Agricultural Zoning District. Do we have a motion to? Bring that resolution to the floor.
I'll make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny Resolution 3720. Do we have a second?
A second?
Wow.
I think I know what you're doing, I don't know.
That's okay, there's going to be a discussion.
Yeah.
So, so we have a second, Supervisor Middleton. So the motion in the second is to deny Resolution 3720. Is that, Corporation Council? We have a motion to, would it be killing it right here or off the bat?
Would be a second. I mean, there would still need to be debate, and there would still need to be a vote. So it would just be a vote in the opposite direction. So if you vote I at the vote, you're voting to deny. And if you vote no, you're voting to approve the resolution. So it's just.
Supervisor Warnold, do you need to leave?
Well, I figured I better have a drink, this might tear you up.
Thank you.
Anybody else need one?
I do.
I do, Steve.
So it's a, the, the motion is fine. The motion is fine the way it is presented. Supervisor O'Connell, are you okay with that explanation?
I thought that had to be in the positive.
Do it here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Arkand?
I would call the question. So I mean, I, I feel no need for debate. We're either going to bring it to the floor, we're going to deny the motion and bring it to the floor, or we're going to approve the motion, and we're not, it, it's gone.
Okay, so call a question, that is non-debatable, correct? Huh, if it gets a second?
It needs a second.
So do we have a second?
I'll second that.
You'll second that, Jay. So we have, we have a, yeah, we're not going to debate this then. So there's a vote. So we have a, an I would be, this conditional use is. What's that? Say that again.
You don't vote on calling the question.
So it's over?
No.
No, you gotta, no, we gotta vote.
No, I, that's what I said, we gotta vote.
We're voting on whether this comes to the floor.
Yeah, that's what he was saying.
That's what I'm saying, right? So we're voting on whether this comes to the floor right now. Supervisor O'Connell, you, you're good with that? So an I means it does not come to the floor? A no means we're going to bring this back up and try to get it back onto the floor?
We need two-thirds.
To kill this right now, the way it's going. So how many votes does that require?
So to end debate, you need two-thirds.
Two-thirds, and how many, how many, ten? So we need 10 supervisors to end the debate on this. Roll call vote, I'm assuming? We better have that.
John Bonaparte.
An I means we're, it's off, we're not talking about it anymore.
And then it goes to a vote.
And then it goes to a vote.
Right.
Right?
Right.
No.
No.
Mr. Olson made the motion to deny the resolution. Ms. Middleton seconded the motion to deny the resolution. Mr. Arkand called the question, meaning ending the debate. Needs a second to do that, he did. There's no debate on the request to end the debate. There's a two-thirds vote to end debate before the vote, which means there's no more discussion before the vote or denying the resolution. That's.
That's what we're voting on.
So you are currently voting on whether or not debate ends. That's what you're voting on right now.
And it takes ten people to end the debate. So John, are you gonna end debate? Would be an I to end debate. Or a no means we're gonna debate this.
No.
No.
Then we have to bring it to the floor.
Bring it to the floor. No brings it to the floor. Right? Russ, no, you're shaking your head no. Okay, we need to have this explained. We had our first vote done, and we don't know what we're voting on. Supervisor Arkand?
I, I called the question.
Yep.
And I don't know that, I don't know that that needs a second. I think the chair can rule whether or not people still want to debate it. It, it doesn't, you don't have to, you don't, I don't think you second calling the question. We never have. And I would just say, I mean, let's just vote on whether or not we want to talk about this. We don't want to talk about it, let's kill it and it goes away. If we want it to come up, that we can talk about it, then let's turn this motion down and make a motion to bring it to the floor. Right now, the motion is to, to deny.
To deny this. And I think the person that seconded this motion, denying, thought there was gonna be debate, I'm assuming.
Oh, I, not necessarily. I, I, to understand that, that your motion was to kill the CUP as it is before us, I seconded that. Then there was this other, to talk about discussion or not. So.
There would have been a discussion about, there would have been a discussion about killing this. I think there was gonna be a discussion about what you two made as a first and a second, but when the question was called, that basically says we're not going to debate this. So then, that's where we're at is, the question is, are we gonna debate it or not? And I think that's what Corporation Council is saying. We're calling a vote on whether we're gonna debate it. And if we're not gonna debate it, it's obviously going, it's over.
It, it being the CUP, not the discussion.
Supervisor Arkand?
I, I disagree. I, I feel that the motion on the floor is to deny this resolution.
Yep.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't know why we would, why would we debate denying it.
We're just vote on it.
We'll just vote on it.
Yeah.
And that's why I called the question. Let, let's vote on without debate. If it goes, if it fails, now another motion can be made to bring it to the floor. Then we definitely debate.
Was that, was that your intent Supervisor Olson, that you wanted there to be no debate and this is over with, with that motion?
Not necessarily, but I'm okay with it. If, if the second is okay with it, if, if she's not, I would, I would withdraw it. If she, if the second is okay with it, I'm perfectly fine.
So your guys' intent is that this resolution just stops right here and there's no debate on it? Okay, then I, then I, I'll, I'll, let's, I'll call the vote. It's a roll call vote. We're gonna vote on whether we're killing this right now, or whether we're gonna debate it.
Yes means killing it.
Okay, so Corporation Council?
If you want me to chime in?
I do.
The, the rules of order, if we're gonna end debate, because Mr. Olson's motion to deny is essentially the same as a motion to approve, except it's in
Reverse.
Reverse. So ultimately, what would normally happen then is Mr. Olson would make the motion, Ms. Middleton would second, you all would debate. Mr. Arkand's calling the question means it ends debate. It requires a second, according to Roberts' rules, and it requires a vote of two-thirds if, if, if you all are okay with not tiring yourselves out talking before Mr. Nelson decides that the debate is over, then you all have to decide by a two-thirds majority that debate has ended. That's, so if you call the question, you have to vote after a second, which I think was received, and it needs to receive two-thirds of the vote to end the debate. That's, that's the procedure.
Supervisor Arkand?
We don't bring motions to the floor to accept or deny. We, we simply bring a motion to bring a resolution to the floor. It never comes with a accept or deny. I, I find this all of order.
Yep. If I may, so ultimately, Mr., our Supervisor Olson's motion still would have some discussion, and in order to end that discussion, there would still be calling the question, and, and that would be ending any debate on the issue of denying. Motion to bring it to the floor would also have debate and would also then have a vote, but if you're gonna just end the debate, there needs to be a second and a two-thirds vote to end the debate.
We have a second. And Supervisor Arkand?
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw the second.
Draw the second. So we're back to the original motion. That, so we have a motion to deny, we have a second, so now it's open for discussion. Supervisor Arkand?
Is the motion to deny coming to the floor?
It's on the floor right now. We have a motion on the floor to deny it. And do we want to debate whether or not we want to, do you have a question about why we're denying it? You want to ask why these guys?
I'm gonna hear it.
Supervisor Olson?
There again, if the second is willing to withdraw her second, I would be willing to withdraw my deny motion to deny and just bring it back to the floor as a normal.
That would maybe be helpful.
And then let it get voted up or down.
Yeah, that, that's, I, I, I just Russ, I framed it the wrong way apparently. I wanted to frame it the way that way, but I'm fine with bringing it to the
The way you're gonna vote on it, it sounds like you framed it.
I, I think it's probably well-known how I'm gonna vote, but I, I would
Okay, so it sounds like the first and the second.
I will withdraw, if you want to withdraw.
So you want to speak?
And then we'll have simple debate and simple vote.
So we need a, so we need a motion to
I'll make a motion to bring it to the floor.
Have a second to bring it to the floor?
I'll second it.
Okay, Supervisor.
Oh, I have a question. If I call the question.
Did you call the question?
No.
All right, so now this is debatable. Why is resolution why is resolution fifteen A in front of us? Jason, can you speak to this resolution? Explain what it is and what it does and what it doesn't do.
So this resolution would take and amend the Pope County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance to include the seventeen condition for a swine CAFO under the agricultural twenty zoning district only. And also, it amends the administrative provisions of the ordinance to include that if the committee wants additional reports or, or information from the applicant, that anything that they require will be at the applicant's expense.
It's that simple?
Yes. This and that will only apply in the towns and that to have points.
All right, are there any questions about this resolution? Supervisor Rowdy?
I just want to make it clear that this didn't come out of Environmental Services. This came out of the Executive Committee. And now the moratorium got pulled down, but we hadn't finished our work on it.
Sure. I'm hoping you're not gonna quit working on it.
No.
Right. Okay. Supervisor, and I, I guess address, and I believe the Executive Committee took it up, because we're made up of chairs from every department, and we realized the moratorium was gonna come to an end. And in case this exactly what happened tonight happened, and we lost our moratorium, I, I felt very strongly that I wanted to protect my community somehow, that we would have a conditional use process in place, so that's a little bit why we had it on our agenda and why we poured it on with Jason just coming up with kind of a broad way that we would have some protection in place while committees are still working on, you know, putting more protection in place, because obviously no one was done with everything. Supervisor Warndall?
That was my question. Is the committee gonna continue to work to get, to get a ordinance in place?
I would certainly hope so, yes.
Despite the, the lack of the other.
Right.
Do we?
Supervisor Kelly?
Do we need an ordinance if we have? Yes.
The policy decision in that between, and that you guys, and that if there's specific criteria that you really like about an operations ordinance, it's possible to amend the comprehensive ordinance down the road and that to include that. It's no, by no means a one and done deal or set stone thing. So you could have just the CUP, you could have a CUP and an operations-based ordinance, or the county board could amend the CUP down the road, and that if it's adopted tonight, include whatever you need, so.
Just put, just put a quick stop gap in that there was gonna be some protection put in place if we needed it. That's what this is, and this can be changed, amended, you could throw it away a few months from now when the, a new CUP gets in place and an operation ordinance or whatever. This can be changed, they need to, right?
About a month and a half or two months, and that's one of the issues why the Executive Committee wanted to bring it to the county board, because at their last meeting, there just wasn't enough time, even if we had a completed operations-based ordinance, get it in and get it adopted by the county board before the moratorium expired.
Supervisor Middleton?
But just to be clear, it, it leaves a third of the county out. So that's, that's the one, that's our real weak spot, is the, the, the county, part of the county that's really kind of targeted right now by the CAFO side of it, I mean.
Unzoned.
Yeah.
Except for the shoreline district in those unzones are covered.
Right, the little friends around.
About fifty percent of the township is covered.
Anyway, you know what I'm saying. A third of, rough, whatever, give or take the
Yeah.
Which has been my big concern about the CUP along, which is why I second Brad's piece. In addition to the fact that we don't have finding the fact in there, so that leaves us open to legal challenge tomorrow, if we pass this tonight. We don't have finding the fact in there to say why we think those seventeen things that Dad Cap said, well, they said fifteen of the seventeen are challengeable, and we don't even have finding the fact. We're really open.
So Supervisor, Lisa? Would you explain that? Are, are we dealing with the Dad Cap recommendations, any of this in this CUP?
No, and that, so if the county board was to go back and only accept what Dad Cap is saying would be correct, for one thing, and that one of the issues that they raised was being the swine specific. So in other words, in order to comply with that, this would have to apply to all CAFOs. And that there's other requirements, and that, that again are related directly to the citing requirements that they enforce. However, our ordinance also has twelve criteria, and that to protect the public safety they can deal with traffic, to deal with uses, and that, and I'm not an attorney, but that we would try to work with our corp counsel, and that if there was any, you know, objections to those conditions, and try to support them through the, the criteria that we've already got in our ordinance to align with the purpose and intent of that ordinance originally, so that we can read it. That because it's a zoning ordinance, and that there's all kinds of conditional uses out there, and that they have hours of operation and manure management plans and stuff that might be in effect, and that, and you're able to do that because of the zoning.
We're not being specific on this. I would ask Corporation Council, if you would read this resolution, because I think it's very helpful, again, that we understand this is not the resolution that Environmental Services put forward to Dad Cap, correct, Jason?
Correct. Well, this was just drafted afterwards. What was provided to Dad Cap, and, and staff didn't really even provide it. Dad Cap went out there, found it on our website. It's been posted for months, and then they reviewed it and they provided it.
Corporation Council, would you please read?
You want me to read the ordinance in its entirety?
Yes, please.
Or the resolution in its entirety?
Sorry.
All right. Resolution number thirty-seven twenty, Ordinance to Enact Amended Pope County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance to the Pope County Board of Supervisors. Whereas, the Pope County Board of Supervisors enacted ordinance number thirty-two dash sixteen on August sixteenth, twenty sixteen, entitled as Pope County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance, regulating the unincorporated lands outside of the shoreline areas in towns with county zoning under Wisconsin Statute Section fifty-nine point six nine. And, whereas, ordinance number thirty-two dash sixteen was a comprehensive rewrite, and it created for, parent four, and parent, agricultural zoning districts, which are residential agricultural five, agricultural ten, agricultural twenty, and farmland preservation. And, whereas, ordinance number thirty-two dash sixteen was amended by ordinance zero seven dash nineteen on April third of twenty nineteen. And, whereas, the proposed amendments add quote, swine concentrated animal feeding operations, end quote, to the list of conditional uses under the agricultural twenty zoning district with several prerequisite conditions. And, whereas, the agricultural twenty zoning district is the appropriate zoning district for swine CAFOs because these areas are less populated and other large-scale agricultural businesses are allowed by conditional use permit in this district. And, whereas, Pope County held three different stakeholder meetings on January twenty-first of twenty twenty to gather public comments from agricultural producers, elected officials, and concerned citizens. And, whereas, on June sixteenth, twenty twenty, the Pope County Zoning Administrator filed pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section fifty-nine point six nine, parent five, and parent, and parent E, and parent, a petition sought to amend the Pope County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance through the enactment of the proposed amended Pope County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance. And, whereas, on July eighth, twenty twenty, the Pope County Environmental Services Committee, as the Planning and Zoning Committee, opened and held a public hearing on the petition to amend the Pope County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance. And, whereas, after considering public input received in the public hearing and incorporating such public input as appropriate, the Pope County Environmental Services Committee recommends the Pope County Board of Supervisors to enact as and for the county's comprehensive land use ordinance under Section fifty-nine point six nine, the attached proposed ordinance entitled, quote, amended Pope County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance, end quote. Now therefore, pursuant to Wisconsin, uh, Wisconsin Statute Sections fifty-nine point six nine, parent five, and parent, parent E, and parent, the Pope County Board of Supervisors ordains as follows. One, the amended Pope County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance attached hereto and incorporated herein is enacted. Two, the amended Pope County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance shall supersede the related provisions of ordinance number zero seven, uh, dash nineteen, Pope County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance. Three, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Sections fifty-nine point one four, parent one, and parent, and nine eight five point zero one, parent five, and parent, the county clerk is directed to cause to be published the ordinance enacted herein. Four, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section fifty-nine point six nine, parent five, and parent, parent, the amended Pope County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance shall be effective upon passage and publication.
Okay. Thanks. Call the question?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Pritchard?
Uh, this is a chair on the, a, a question on the resolution, uh, thirty-two, whatever. Thirty, uh, thirty-seven twenty, is that right?
Yeah, we're on thirty-seven dash twenty.
I would like to move an amendment to the resolution.
Okay, what is your amendment?
My amendment is there would be two whereas clauses added, and a, a therefore, an additional therefore clause added, and the whereas clause would be the, whereas the moratorium will expire on October fifteen, twenty twenty, and the board wishes to adopt a CAFO ordinance before that date. And, whereas, the Environmental Services Committee has not yet completed its work on their CUP ordinance and is working on a and is working on a operational capo ordinance. Be it further resolved that the Environmental Service Committee be directed to continue its work to refine the ordinance adopted hereby and its work on an operational capo ordinance.
You want these all as one motion and one amendment?
I want, uh, uh, one amendment, uh, uh, to that.
For all of them. So, I guess we'll ask for a second for debate, but I, I will have some legal questions for Corporation Counsel on that. Is there a second? Supervisor Rowdy, second. Uh, Corporation Counsel, is there any legal issues with those amendments?
Because it doesn't change anything that was already there. It doesn't substantially change the resolution. It's simply an additional direction to the Environmental Services Committee to continue doing work that they're already doing. I wouldn't consider it a substantial change, so I don't think that there's any legal problem with that amendment.
Uh, Supervisor O'Connell?
It wasn't swine specific. He didn't either. He's in all capos.
So is, is, uh, is your resolution swine specific, Supervisor Pritchard?
I, I'm happy to make it swine specific if that's what the committee's working on. Uh, is that what they're working on?
Supervisor O'Connell says yes. There any, oh, hold on.
The operational one is held in human services. So that should be added, not just.
Environmental Services, that the operational one, uh, we would add, uh, to human services because that's who's working on that one. We'd add that language. Supervisor Rowdy?
Oh, I was just gonna say I, I missed, I see, I know he said capo, and it should have said swine capo. I would rather say.
Yeah, so Supervisor.
Swine capo ordinance, is that correct, or what?
Yeah. What, uh, did we get his exact language down, or does, do you have it in writing? Excuse me?
Well, I've got it in my cursive handwriting, which at this point is probably not totally legible, but, uh, uh, does it need to have the Health and Human Services Committee mentioned in it as well, then?
Yes, it does.
Uh. Well, okay, if, if someone wants, I don't know if you want to take a five minute break or a three minute break and I'll.
I think we should, I think we should take a five minute break and get that language written up accurately before we vote. We'll take a five minute break. So we have Supervisors Pritchard's amendments up on the screen. Please. Okay, so the public can see this too. So this is Supervisors Pritchard's amendments. Um. Clerk, would you read the amendments, please, to us?
Yes. Let's see, so I don't have the word format, so I couldn't put it right in there. Just give me a second, just to start on the right spot.
Can we all see it on the screen?
Yes, but I think it's just helpful to hear it.
So after the last line, forty-six on the first page, um, and we'll start there, entitled, amended Polk County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance. Whereas the moratorium will expire on October fifteenth, twenty twenty, and the board wishes to adopt a swine capo ordinance before that date. And whereas the Environmental Services Committee has not yet completed its work on the swine CUP ordinance. And whereas the Health and Human Services Board is currently working on an operational capo ordinance, and each needs additional time to complete that work. Now therefore, pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Sections, the Polk County Board of Supervisor ordains as follows. Number one, the amended Polk County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance attached here to and incorporated herein is enacted. Number two, the amended Polk County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance shall supersede the related provisions of ordinance number seven nineteen, Polk County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance. Number three, pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes.
Excuse me, clerk, is, are you reading the whole ordinance?
I was just gonna read it how it was inserted, because there's two spots to insert.
Okay.
I thought it would be.
Yeah, thank you.
So number three is pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Sections fifty-nine fourteen one and nine eighty-five oh one five. The county clerk is directed to cause, directed to cause to be published, to be published the ordinance enacted herein. Number four, pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section fifty-nine sixty-nine five E, the amended Polk County Comprehensive Land Use Ordinance shall be effective upon passage and publication. Now be, this is the other amendment, now be it further resolved that the Environmental Services Committee be directed to continue its work to refine the amended Polk County Comprehensive Use Ordinance enacted hereby as it pertains to swine capos and the Health and Human Services Board is directed to continue its work on an operational capo ordinance, each for future consideration by the Polk County Board of Supervisors.
Supervisor Pritchard, is that your, uh, intent in your amendment?
Bell asleep, ring the bell.
He's yelling in there, yes? Wait a minute. Supervisor Pritchard, was this the intent of your amendment?
Yes.
Do, did we have a second on this amendment? Supervisor Rowdy, second to the amendment? Okay, is there any further discussion about the amendment? We're gonna be voting on the amendment. We're not voting on the resolution, we're voting on the amendment, correct, Corporation Counsel?
Sounds correct.
See no other discussion? All in favor of the amendment? Voting aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Back to the original resolution, Supervisor Middleton?
On line, um, forty-three, uh, this should not say Environmental Services. It should say Executive Committee recommends Polk County Board.
So what are you saying is you want to make an amendment, or you want, or is this a error? You think Supervisor O'Connell?
Forty-three, whereas Polk County Environmental Services Committee recommends, it should say County Executive Committee recommends?
That's correct. That's who did the, that's who did that, right? So we should remove, so I think you need to make that the, uh, a motion to amend.
Okay.
So you're gonna make the motion to amend line forty-three to say Polk County Executive Committee can remove Environmental Services? Is there a second on that? Second by LeBlanc? Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Are there any other discussions or amendments to this resolution?
Oh, really quick.
Any question? We'll call vote.
We're voting on the, on the resolution right now?
As amended.
As amended. I just want to be clear.
Yep.
Going on?
Yeah.
Thirty-seven twenty, voting on the resolution. Uh, I would be to recommend to enact this resolution as amended.
Aye.
Who's the first vote?
Bonaparte. Says aye, okay.
He, he voted the first last time.
Didn't count it, was it front?
Oh.
Start over.
Gotcha. Yeah, John, sorry.
You wait, Mr. Chair?
I am.
Okay, so Bonaparte, you said yes.
Aye, yeah.
Okay, Demeling? Yes, sorry. Olson?
No.
Buckrody?
Yes.
Warren Dahl?
No.
LeBlanc?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike Pritchard?
Get him. Say, ask him again, Mr. Pritchard.
Mr. Pritchard, what's your vote?
Uh, yes. Good.
Karen Kelly?
Yes.
Tim O'Connell?
Yes.
Amy Middleton?
No.
Dee Luke?
Yes.
Karen Duncanson?
Yes.
Russ Arcan?
No.
Uh, if it's not needed for a time.
Nope.
I will, I will vote to say yes, I support it.
Alright, so we have eleven yeses and four no.
Resolution carries. Public, um, number eighteen, Public Safety and Public Works Committee has resolution forty dash twenty, resolution regarding the creation of a ATV slash UTV ad hoc committee. We have a motion to bring that to the floor. Supervisor Luke?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Duncanson? Um, discussion? Any questions about this resolution? Uh, the chair of the committee, Jay, can you explain how this went through your committee?
We just felt, since time we've been talking about this. We felt that it was pretty important to, uh, due to the growth of ATV, UTV sports, um, program in, uh, in the state. We felt it was, it was much had separate needs, uh, compared to some of the other recreational things. Trying to get it away from the, the, uh, the quiet, uh, sports. Uh, people that utilize Polk County, the Stower Trail and those type of things. Develop some, uh, trails and hopefully, uh, have a better handle on monitoring the ATV, UTV, uh, use, uh, of people coming in and having more influence on how they, how they ride those vehicles. I know Burnett County's having a bit of a problem in more of the townships in their, in their roads. I don't think we've got that serious of a sand road like they do, and they're easily torn up. Well, I think that, uh, committee, they will be working with the Public Protection Committee. We got a, some pretty good, uh, candidates for that committee to, uh, to use some. They've already got some funding lined up. They've got some, uh, some programs in, in mind. They've done some work on their own. We thought if we had a, a separate, uh, organization in its own right, that it would be more, um, more aggressively pursued as far as recreational activity in Polk County and, and bring in a lot more, uh, recreational.
Will you be supplying the county, um, like the list of this ad hoc committee, it says you have one Polk County supervisor on it?
Well, we have, we have two, basically.
Two supervisors on it.
Hopefully we have Joe and Doug Bull.
This is at least one, okay.
I've just kind of left the, the charge on this thing all along, and he's done a good job with it. And he's worked up some other, uh, private people with, with, in different, uh, clubs that are extremely active. So, I mean, get the controversy between the two back in, in line, so that we'll have a peaceful, uh, we'll all have a little peaceful, uh, recreational activity. Separate in a number of ways.
Supervisor Rowdy?
Uh, just to follow up with our chairman in that we, we have our two supervisors, then we have, uh, three people on the committee with one alternate if they'll in if we need it. And I, there, I can certainly give you their names if you'd like.
That would be, that was a good question, but I think, I think the, uh, administrator appoints them to that, on that, uh, committee, do you not?
No, I think, uh, they were selected in the, one of our committee meetings. If you recall, remember they, we were signing them there.
Is there gonna be public, I mean, are these public meetings that you're gonna have an agenda, they're gonna be posted, so supervisors, are they gonna be during your meetings?
No, hopefully they, they're separate, because they're, they'll be working on some, uh, funding program for the state. Some of them, it's got a, they have quite a fund with licensing fees. They have a, they have a tremendous group. And, uh.
How do we know as a county board what they're doing or what they're working on?
They'll report to Public Protection and.
Okay, you guys will handle that.
Come to the county board with.
David and John be there.
On a regular basis.
Okay. Uh, Supervisor Middleton?
And then how will this, maybe that's our job, is to make sure the interface between the two trail groups. You know, like, we know how those two pieces will.
Oh, you mean the recreational.
Yeah, so like your ATV piece and then our big countywide planning.
We'd be happy to, to, uh, coordinate any efforts that you might, that might be, uh, you know, similarly, uh, interest that we would have, that some part of your group may have. Be happy to, uh, to work with them. And I, I think this would, this is gonna be quite a, quite a burden to any. Just this alone is gonna, would be a burden to, to a committee that takes on so much as the recreational committee does conversely. I think separated is extremely important.
Any other questions on this resolution? I've seen any questions. Uh, all in favor, uh, forty dash twenty, uh, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Carried unanimous. Supervisors announcements, are there any? Not seeing any? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Joe Demeling? Demeling, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.